Okay, then if everybody's ready, we'll call the meeting to order. Would you read the sunshine law?
This is the Thursday, May 6th, 2021, meeting of the Franklin Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and it has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the zoning board would pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format, and is being conducted utilizing virtual/remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the zoning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier-News, on the township website and on exterior doorways of the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting: link to the virtual meeting via WebEx and a call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available through the township website and/or by appointment in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. Reminder to board members: please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all the applicant's witnesses have presented, finished presenting, which time the chair will ask the board for comment. Instructions for public input: For those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two options. You can press the raised hand button. To use this feature, click on the Participants icon in the lower right-hand corner of your screen, which will open up a new Participants window on the right-hand side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on the hand icon. Or you can use the chat function. Either use the default, which is everyone, or chat Mark Healy. Do not send the message to Christine Woodbury as she's unable to review messages during the meeting. Also advise the public as well that the chat function is only to be used to alert me to your desire to ask comments or questions of the board, not for ongoing discussion of the application. Also do not use the Q&amp;A function as that will not be checked during the meeting. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and address. If providing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. After speaking, if on WebEx, please, please press the lower hand button. If calling in, please press star three again.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, one sec. Mark, if you could bring Bruce McCracken in, he's the fourth person down. Cheryl Bethia?
Here.
Bruce McCracken? I'll come back to him because I see his name. Joel asks to be excused. Alan Rich?
Here.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Robert Shepherd asks to be excused. Rich Prokranik?
Here.
Una Lachia?
Here.
Basim Fardas?
Here.
Chairman Thomas?
Here.
And Bruce McCracken, I do see your name. I don't see your picture yet, and can you hear me? Was that him, or is that somebody else talking? One second, if everybody could just, on this call, mute yourself so I could just see if I can hear him. Thank you. Una, can you mute yourself, please? Thank you. Bruce McCracken, can you hear me? All right, if you, oh, you, I, was that you?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. You, you keep trying to come in there, but at least we can hear you. That's what's important. So, we're going to continue with the meeting, and you just go ahead and get yourself, so we can get your picture, okay?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas, go ahead.
Okay, going on to the discussion section of the agenda, we have an item, Franklin to Associates. Have anybody here for that?
Well, just give us-
I believe that's Mr. Lanfrith's.
I'll bring him in as a panelist.
Mr. Chairman, Peter Lanfrith appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is the request for an adjournment of this matter. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. We are still working through some things with respect to this applicant, this appeal, and also perhaps a new development application, and we would request that this matter be carried to your first meeting in August. Whenever, if we proceed on that night, we will notice and advertise.
Lanfrith, do you agree to tolling of the time for the appeal review?
I believe we already sent a letter to that effect, but if we haven't, I agree to it, and we'll send a letter to that effect.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions from anyone? Or entertain a motion to approve of the first meeting in August, well, the only meeting, possibly.
I move that we approve, to move it, the discussion to the first meeting in August.
Is there a second? I call the board.
Carol Bethia?
Yes.
Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Go read. I'm sorry. Alan Rich? Alan Rich, I'm sorry. I see your mouth moving.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Rich Prokranik?
Yes.
Una Lachia?
Yes.
Basim Fardas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Okay, moving on to hearings. Kathy DeWitt, ZDA, 21-
We have the minutes.
You have the minutes, Mr. Thomas. We have minutes-
Oh, I'm sorry. Skip that twice. Regular minute, meeting minutes, March 18th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Carol Bethia?
Yes.
Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Rich Prokranik?
Yes.
Una Lachia?
Yes.
Basim Fardas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes, and then we have the meeting minutes of the regular meeting, April 1st, 2021. We need a motion.
Move it.
And a second.
A second.
Carol Bethia?
Yes.
Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Rich Prokranik?
Yes.
Una Lachia?
Yes.
Basim Fardas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Now we can move to Kathy DeWitt, the first hearing, ZDA 210003. Applicant seeking a C variance for a solar array that was installed incorrectly in the backyard at 91 Walnut Avenue Somerset, block 452, lot 59 in the R20 zone. There is an attorney, correct? Or no?
No, there's not an attorney. She actually has a representative that Mark has already brought across, and he's just going to bring across Mr. DeWitt.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, both members are available on the screen now.
I mean, we don't see Fabian, but I see his name. Mr. Lachia, if you, there, there you are. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Thomas.
Okay, we need this. Does this person need to be sworn in?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Sir, could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, provide us with your professional address, please.
Fabian Wicca, 5 Dickerson Road, Hillsboro, New Jersey, 08844.
Mr. Wicca, you can put your hand down. Can you please state to the board what your profession is?
I am the Solar Operations Manager for the company First Light Energy. I am in charge of all solar operations from the process of sale to the installation and inspection of any solar systems in the state of New Jersey for my company.
And your company engaged the Ms. DeWitt for installation of solar panels at her property at 91 Walnut Avenue?
That is correct. We sold, designed, and installed that system.
And you're familiar with the property and that equipment?
Yes.
And you're going to be testifying on her behalf as to what happened with the installation of the equipment, which caused a rear yard setback requirement?
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn as a fact witness, and you can proceed.
Okay, Mr. Wicca, would you explain to us situation that you found and what happened?
Sure can. Good evening, board. Thank you very much for having Miss, myself and Mr. DeWitt. What occurred is Mr. DeWitt signed for a solar contract with our company due to the size of the system and Mrs. DeWitt's request to not have it roof-mounted. One, the solar system was too large for her roof, but two, she has potential future plans for possible expansion from her ranch to a two-story home or any other possibilities. We chose a ground-mounted system. As it was within the ordinance of town, we did design a ground-mounted system. I myself walked that property with Mr. DeWitt. I did receive the setbacks both on the side, front, and rear properties. During the time of the stakeout, where we marked the preliminary location of the ground mount, myself and Mr. DeWitt, Mr. DeWitt notified me that her property was what we would call a row of beautiful cedar trees in the back of the property between her and the rear neighbor. I used that as my marker when taking my measurements. Mr. DeWitt wanted to make sure we kept as tight as possible to that property line because she has a very beautiful backyard that she wants to be able to utilize for her family and for her dogs. She also has the potential for expansion of a shed and a very nice garden. Complying to what my customer requested, I marked out the property. We had a licensed engineering company come and do pre-drilled holes for that ground mount. My solar company then continued the solar installation. We passed our building and electrical inspections. I was told that in order to complete a ground mount certificate in the township of Franklin, we needed a survey. I hired a surveyor. That gentleman then completed the work. He also gave Mr. DeWitt some markers on the property for the four corners, as she didn't have them previously over the 16 years she owned the house. When we received that survey, we found that the property, well, the, the furthest northern or rear marker was marked at 18.6 feet from the property line. Seven feet, well, technically six and a half feet off of the proper setback, which was 25 feet in this zone. Upon that, I asked Mr. Healy and other persons of the zoning department what were my options. One option was to move the array. Unfortunately, Mr. DeWitt already has spent about $52,000, if not more, on this ground-mounted system. And it's not easy because it was custom-built and welded on-site. My second option was to apply to this board with an application for a request of a variance to reduce that distance from 25 feet to 18 feet, I'm sorry, to 19 feet, so that we can be in compliance with the rearmost portion of that ground-mounted solar system.
Okay. Any board questions?
I have a question. So, before you started, there wasn't a survey, there was just measurements from the homeowner?
That is, that is correct. Typically, we do not perform any sort of ground mounts on people that don't have ample acreage for that type of system, seeing that we had ample acreage, and our assumption was that we knew our proper setbacks. We did not perform a survey. One was not technically required before submission. Unfortunately, we were incorrect in what we judged as being on her property. We have now found out those cedar trees do not belong on her property per the surveyor.
Have you knocked your neighbors? Have you knocked your neighbors?
I have not. I will allow Mr. DeWitt. She has three neighbors. She may better speak on that.
I have a question for Mark involving with this testimony. Doesn't the township require a permit or a plan for anything?
Yeah, there, there was a drawing submitted at the time of the zoning permit. The location of the proposed solar panel was drawn on a copy of the survey. The way it was drawn was, it did comply, so obviously we approved it. I think basically what the testimony that's been provided to you was, then when it came time to translate that location in the field, that there frankly were some mistakes made as to where the rear property line actually was.
Okay, the applicant, I hope, understands that this application is for the solar arrays. I saw something, some mention of a shed eventually being constructed. That, that's possible approval for a variance tonight. Doesn't approve putting a shed back in the same area where it would violate the setback, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other board questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify one thing. Mr. Wicca, you stated it's 19 feet in the rear yard. The application has it at 18.
You are correct. I am sorry. You are correct, sir, because we are at 18.6, we would be within six inches of that setback. You're all right. I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Just clarify that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? All right, we're open to the public. If there's anyone out there who wishes to ask a question or make a statement.
Okay, so it's indicated previously, if you're on WebEx, you can do the raise hand function, or if you're calling in, you can press star three if you have any comments or questions on this application.
If, if the public does not, I would like another opportunity to just show people potential photographs that have been posted and that we've taken of lately to show the, the actual array on the property right now.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm not seeing any member of the public wishing to speak.
Okay, then we'll close to the public. These pictures or photos are the ones that are enclosed within the packet you submitted to the township, I assume?
There is, I believe, one that was published prior to last week. This week, I provided Mr. Healy and Ms. Woodbury some supplemental ones, more of actual time, April and May photographs. The first ones I took, I believe, were in either February or March. Obviously, winter. There was sparse foliage. We want to show the, the beautiful foliage she has around her property lines right now in case anyone would deem it a potential eyesore.
Okay, we have a number of things in the packet. Of course, it's not going to be current to the way things might have changed from February to May. Is there anyone on the board that would like to see or needs to see any of that, or are you willing to move forward with a motion? Okay, then let's, let's have a motion.
Okay. I would like to make a motion. We approve ZDA 210003.
Do you have a second?
Second, Bruce McCracken.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, pull the board, please.
Carol Bethia?
Yes.
Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Rich, yeah, Rich Prokranik?
Yes.
Una Lachia?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Okay. Moving on with the next application. Rosie and Siva, the Hondu, ZDA 210008. C variance, in which the applicant wants to construct a deck and patio at 16 Supercourt, Princeton, block 11.01, lot 10.36 in the R10A zone. And need a representative of the applicant or the applicant.
Yep, I'll do that now.
Okay. Hello?
Okay, Mr. Thomas, there, there. This is the applicant.
Okay, the applicants representing yourselves, correct?
Correct.
Do you swear them in?
Sure. Mr. Dandoo, will both of you be providing testimony today?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm a testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
We do.
Yes. Please state your name and provide us with your address, please.
Rosie Dandoo, 16 Supercourt, Princeton, New Jersey, 08540.
Shiva Dandoo, 16 Supercourt, Princeton, New Jersey, 08540.
Okay, would you just give us an overview, what you, what you're planning to do, and why it needs to be located where you want it to, to be?
Okay, so, we're planning to build a deck and a patio. We have a walkout, and therefore we need to do a top floor and a bottom floor. Our application or our current coverage allocation is a max of 35%. And the house itself is, a, a house itself and the driveway are the current site is 31.9%. What we're proposing is 41.4%. In order to cover, I apologize, I'm not going to try to get the, get, get it right out of my, right out. So, the current lot is currently 41, sorry, our proposal is for 41.4%. The goal is to basically just have a deck and patio so that our family could enjoy it over the summer. And with the pandemic, it's become even more crucial, so I started the process sometime last year. We're running into extended impervious coverage that we're seeking.
Okay. One obvious way that that could be reduced is, is to make it small, a little smaller. Is there a reason, particular reason, that the size is necessary for, that, that you've proposed? Or that it couldn't be made a little smaller?
So, yes, the decrease would be 800 square feet, which is significant for the size though. If it was a couple hundred, 100 square feet, I think I would be willing to do that. I think the 800 square feet makes it significantly small for our family to enjoy it. I have my parents that live with me. I have kids. And we're, we're just trying to create an outdoor living space for us to enjoy at this point.
Okay, board questions? All right, we're open to the public and then see if there's anything, depending on what, what happens there. See if there's anything you want to add. So, we'll see again if there's any one out there who wishes to make a statement or ask a question about this application. Now is the time.
Okay, so once again, if you're on WebEx, I do see somebody with his hand raised, but we'll get to you in a minute. Again, if you're on WebEx, do the raised hand, or if you're calling in, press star three. I'm going to go to Arnold Schmidt, who has a, has his hand up. Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt, unmuted? Mr. Schmidt, last-
Must be in there, Mark.
I'm wondering if, I saw in the, in the material, he had some comments on another application. I'm wondering if this was just a mistake at this point.
Okay, so just give the public one last chance. I'm just going to go back to Mr. Schmidt's hand. Mr. Schmidt, do you have a question on this application? Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, we don't have anybody for this application.
Okay, then we'll close to the public. Does the board have any comments or suggestions or?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman, that I think will be relevant to the, to the discussion. Ms. Dandoo, your property is located on Supercourt, correct?
That is correct.
Supercourt is a cul-de-sac?
It is a cul-de-sac.
Okay, now, as you, your house is not on the cul-de-sac, but as you approach the cul-de-sac, correct?
Yes, it's one before, yep.
Okay, now also, before you approach the cul-de-sac, there's a slight bend in Supercourt?
Yes. Oh, that's not our house. The one before is our house.
Okay, now, are the properties along your side of Supercourt all the same size?
They're relatively the same size. The one after us is a little bigger because the cul-de-sac kind of breaks into it.
So, does the cul-de-sac alter the sizes of the properties along your side of the street?
So, yes, my neighbor's house, yes. So, the, he would, that, my neighbor would have a, I want to say, a higher percentage in terms of impervious coverage allotment because of the cul-de-sac cutting, cutting in. Also, all the properties adjacent to us, they have a preserve that counts as a part of their impervious coverage. And so they would also get a bigger allotment of impervious coverage. So, they could essentially build all the way to the preserve, and it would, it would be a part of the 35%, I want to say. Whereas on our side, the, the lot is, the lot doesn't take into account the preserve in the back. And therefore, right now, we don't have anything, but that lot allotment is reduced in some. Essentially, the houses are pretty much the same size. The lots are a little different, but not significantly different. I would say the usable space is similar in the back end. And we all have a preserve, and it's graded, so drainage, I believe, should be pretty well in terms of the runoff water.
Okay, I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other board questions?
I presume you have knocked your neighbors?
Yes, we've notified everybody within 200 square, 200 feet list that we received. We've also- We've also, uh, notified our neighbors, and no one has an objection to it. It's actually.
Mr. Rosenthal, if I could just make a suggestion on, on, on that topic. Rather than asking the applicant if they've talked to their neighbors, which frankly would be, in a way, I think would be hearsay. All the neighbors are noticed, and they have the ability to come out and speak and ask questions. So what I would suggest, suggest is wait to see, see if the neighbors come out and have anything to say or question. Just as a guess.
I had a great comment.
Okay, we opened to the public. No one was there. If there are no comments or questions, we entertain a motion.
I do, I did have one question. I would like to know the applicants have had a chance to read the, uh, TRC report. Comments in there regarding this application. Um, specific to the, um, point three, the first item that the stormwater had mentioned about having enough.
Cheryl, Cheryl. A little difficult for us to hear you. It's going to be difficult for the recording secretary to hear you. Could you?
Okay, let me try that again.
That's much better. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I had something going in the background. Um, so, uh, the, regarding the TRC report, the, the third bullet, which, uh, talks about the stormwater, um, uh, management. So you talked about drainage. Uh, have you, uh, looked at these, uh, comments and been, and responded to them? Or, or can you, uh, be agreeable to, to what is proposed here?
Yes, in terms of drainage, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last comment.
Yes, in terms of drainage, all of the comments will be, um, agreeable.
Okay.
Ms. Bethia, so those will be conditions of approval. Uh, so I will incorporate those, should the board act favorably on this.
Okay.
And those are actually ordinance requirements, whether they needed a variance or not, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, they, they have to comply.
Okay, anything else? Again, a motion or in a second?
Yeah. Can I motion to approve or?
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, call the board, please.
Harold Bethia?
Yes.
Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Richard Prokranic?
Yes.
Malakia?
Yeah, actually, I proposed it, so I'm not sure. Okay, yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Okay, good luck with it, and, uh, we can move on to the next application. Sahara Rose Incorporated, ZBA twenty oh 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 two six. D variance in which the applicant supplying to park fifteen school buses on the property at two JFK Boulevard Somerset, block three eighty-six point one seven, lot one thirty-eight in the zone, ZB, uh, GB zone. And I know, I believe this applicant has representation.
Yes, I'll bring in, uh, Mr. Lanford.
Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Dundoo, your, your hearing is done. You can, uh, exit now. You can, you're welcome to stay on the meeting if you'd like, but you can exit out now.
I'll just make him attendees.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for your time.
I believe Mr. Lanford is in. I think we're ready for you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This evening, I intend to call two witnesses in support of this application, which is a D one use variance to allow the parking of fifteen school buses on the property known as two JFK Boulevard. We are not proposing any site changes or site improvements. Uh, I will be presenting the testimony of Mr. Ali, who is the principal of the applicant corporation, and Mr. Antisell, who is a licensed professional planner and engineer. Uh, I would also like to report to the board, uh, that we did appear before the historic commission and, uh, made a presentation, uh, concerning this, since we are within a thousand feet of the canal, and, uh, they approved it with certain recommendations that were, uh, included in the TRC report. Uh, with that information, I will call Mr. Ali as my first witness.
Mr. Ali, can you hear me?
Stay calm.
Okay, so you have to, uh, have us see you. You have to turn on your camera.
I'm trying to. No, it's okay, right?
No, we cannot see you. If you go down to the bottom of the screen, hover over the bottom of the screen, you'll see two functions, mute and start video. Hit the start video button.
Now you can see me?
Now, yes, sir.
No. Start my video, okay.
There we go.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, Mr. Ali, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm a testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state your names, spell your last, and provide us with your professional address, please?
Last name is Ali, first name, Malgani. My address is two two seven Crowes Road, Edison, New Jersey, zero eight eight one seven.
Thank you, sir. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Legana. Mr. Ali, you are the principal of Sahara Rose INC., the applicant in this matter, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you currently rent office space at two JFK Boulevard. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And what does your company do?
Uh, I transport, uh, students to schools in, uh, New Jersey. I have contract with the Board of Education.
Okay, and how many buses do you have?
Totally, I have like twenty-five.
Okay, and the application that we have before the board this evening is to park fifteen school buses uh, in a portion of the parking lot at two JFK Boulevard, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and since you have twenty-five buses, what hap, where do you keep the other ten buses?
Okay, the other ten buses, uh, some of the, my, my drivers, they have their own parking lot and driveway, and they take it with them, like that they, uh, save gas for their car, private cars, and for my buses. Just so I they keep the buses with them, and it's okay with me.
Okay, so the, the application before the board then is to park fifteen buses, correct?
Yes, sir.
And what size are those buses?
Uh, they take, uh, like sixteen student up to twenty, twenty-four. I don't have.
So, so they're the small school buses, correct?
Yes.
Do you have any fifty passenger school buses?
No way, I don't deal with that.
Okay, and operationally, uh, how does this, does, do the drivers, uh, pick up their buses, and what time do they pick up their buses?
Actually, some of them, they begin at seven. It depends on what time the school they are going to is open. Some of them, they begin at seven. Some of them, they begin at seven thirty, up to eight o'clock, and they come back like nine thirty after the drop of the kids, and some of them, they don't come back to the parking lot. They keep it with them until they go back in the afternoon, pick up the kids from the school, and then after they finish the afternoon drop off, they come and park it for overnight.
Right, so, so to summarize, your drivers show up in the morning between seven and eight AM, uh, in their personal vehicles, uh, pick up their school buses and leave, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then some of them do not come back until the end of the day. They keep the bus all day. Uh, after they do their afternoon run, they return the bus to the parking lot and take their personal vehicles and go home, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And you may have some of the drivers come back after their morning run, drop the bus off, pick up their personal vehicle, come back in the afternoon, pick up the school bus, and then do their afternoon run. Is that correct?
Yeah, some, some of them, yeah, do that, yes, correct.
Okay, and does your company, other than doing, um, Monday through Friday bus runs for the school, do any evening runs or any weekend runs?
No.
So th- these are only for transporting to school on Monday through Fridays during the day?
Yes, unless, unless there's a sport events, when the sport events for the school open, I may apply for, for that. But right now, I don't have.
And you don't have any contracts for, for sporting events at all?
No, not yet, no.
Okay, now, um, the, and I'll get into more detail, and I think the board will see clearly, uh, that we are going to ask that we be allowed to park in a designated area, uh, within that parking lot for those school buses. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and they will be always maintained in that area, correct?
Yes, yes.
And you will not be doing any servicing of those vehicles on the property, anything other than maybe cleaning out the inside of the vehicles when they return? But you're not going to, you're not going to wash the vehicles or service the vehicles or do any oil changes or anything else with respect to the vehicles on the property, right?
No, no way. No, we don't do that.
Now, you indicated you have your office there, uh, at two JFK Boulevard. Uh, are you there almost every day?
Not every day, actually, not every day, because sometimes I'm in my, uh, uh, my house, running some of the phones with the Board of Education.
Okay, when you are there, uh, and you observe the parking lot, is that parking lot, uh, during the day ever crowded?
Hmm, nah. The entire parking, no.
Okay.
Not, only for my, my buses.
Yeah, but the rest of the, yeah, but the rest of the parking lot, there are other businesses on the property that, that rent. Uh, are there any situations where you've observed, uh, parking problems or inadequate parking there?
No, I don't have no problem, no. And al- almost, almost the parking is available. There is many parking spaces are available, like, uh, where I park the buses, it is forty parking on one side, I'm forty on the other side. I occupied only the four sixteen buses, uh, four fifteen buses. The rest of the parking is empty.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ali. I have no further questions.
No problem, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go to my next witness before we open up for questions, or do you want to have the board question this witness?
Well, you only, you said you only have another, one other witness right now, so.
That's correct.
Take that one.
Okay, Mr. Antisell?
Yes.
Mr. Antisell, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm a testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Uh, yes, I do.
Please state your names, spell your last, and provide us with your professional address, please.
Sure, it's, uh, Frank Antisell, A N T I S E L L, uh, twelve Concord Drive, Kendall Park, New Jersey, zero eight eight two four.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Antisell, are you a licensed engineer and a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, and can you very briefly give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Sure, I have a bachelor of science in civil engineering from Widener University, a master's degree from Stevenson Institute of Technology, and I'm licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey, Delaware and Pennsylvania, and a licensed.
Okay, that's fine. We'll, we'll accept that.
All right, just one last, but you're also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Uh,
Will he be testifying?
It's, it's basically planning testimony, but he did take some measurements, so, uh, but it's primarily planning testimony that we're providing from Mr. Antisell. Mr. Antisell, you are familiar with the zoning ordinance of the township of Franklin, the master plan of the township of Franklin, are you not?
Uh, yes, I am.
And you are also familiar with the subject property and have visited same?
Uh, yes, I am. Yes, I have.
Okay, okay. Uh, can you describe the property and also the existing uses on the property? Uh, and then present testimony in support of the, uh, D one variance, and also I would ask Mr. Healy to turn the screen over to you, because I believe you'll be relying on some exhibits, correct?
Yes, I have some, uh, aerial pictures and some other pictures of the site, if, uh, you can give me access, Mr. Healy.
Hey, should be good.
Okay, can the board, can you now see the aerial that's on my screen?
Not yet.
You can? Okay.
No.
Oh, you can't. Okay. Okay, can the board now see, uh, the aerial?
Now we're good.
Okay, right, the, the project is known as two JFK Boulevard. It's in block three eighty-six point seventeen, and it's lot one thirty-eight. The property is three point one, three point seven two acres with a seven thousand three hundred and twenty-eight square foot commercial building, and has approximately a hundred and thirty-six parking spaces on site. There's three parking areas on the site. There's the front parking area, which most of the patrons of the building use. There's the rear, um, parking area behind the building, which most of the employees of the building use. And then there is a parking space over to the right side of the building, uh, which is the area that we're talking about as part of this application. Uh, the property is located in the general business zone. The commer- commercial building contains a number of uses. There are two restaurants in the building. There's a Krauser's, there's a Max Challenge, which is a fitness place. There's a Dependable Cleaners and Tailors. There's a fitness doctor, personal training. There's a dentist and a nail salon. And in addition, there's, uh, several small offices, and the applicant has an office in this building. Um, tonight, we're here to discuss the back right portion of the site, and it's the portion of the property, um, that I'm pointing to here, and we're going to go to the next picture.
Uh, before we do that, I, I think we should mark that first one is, uh, A one, correct, Mr. Legana?
That wasn't previously submitted. I believe it was.
No, I think that. That's a new exhibit.
It was a, it was in Mr. Healy's report, but there's to be safe, we'll mark it as A one.
So it's called A one, uh, aerial photo of site.
Yep, and then A two, which is the one that's in front of you now, is a blow up of the aerial.
Okay.
Showing the parking lot, that, the parking lot that we're, uh, it's in question, and.
So marked.
And when, uh, you look at this part, uh, parking lot, this parking area contains a total of fifty-seven parking spaces, and we are looking to park fifteen mini school buses in this portion of the lot. The lot is, this is bordered by Eastern Avenue and the, uh, ramp from Eastern Avenue, and behind this parking lot is the Cube Smart, which is a self-storage facility. Uh, between the parking area and Eastern Avenue and the Cube Smart, and also the ramp, there is a pretty densely treed area, um, which is creates a pretty nice buffer for our applicant. The applicant's looking to park fifteen school buses, and if I go to the next slide, it's a picture of the parking lot, which we can mark as A three. And we've actually brought the school buses on site to show how they're going to look in this parking lot. And we're looking to park eight on one side and seven on the other, all the way at the end of the parking lot. And, uh, s- since the school bus parking is not a permitted use in the general business zone, we're here for a D one use variance. And when you look at the uh Medici standards, we have to show that the site is specifically suited for this use. Um there is existing case law in, in the state of New Jersey that school bus parking is inherently beneficial use. Um in this classic bus company versus zoning board, uh the court found that the facility for storing and maintaining school buses is inherently beneficial insofar as it, as it is necessary accessory to school buildings themselves. This is a case where the proposed facility was in an industrial zone and not in an immediate vicinity of any school building. Um once a particular use is de- determined to be inherently beneficial, the positive criteria under the statute providing for the use variance is deemed satisfied. And the applicant needs to take a look, it does not have to prove the existence of special reasons under statute, but we do still do need to look at the negative criteria. And when we look at the impact on the surrounding properties, I took a look out at the site and I went to the site and I visited, and as I discussed before, there's a pretty densely treed buffer that surrounds this parking lot, where once you're in this parking area, you're really not visible to any of the surrounding properties, and the only way you really see what's in this lot is if you come onto the site and you go back to the right side of the building. So when you look at the um when you look, looking for a place to park school buses, this seems to be a very appropriate site. Um so when, also, we looked at, took a look at the master plan and the amendments, and there's no impact to the master plan, the zoning ordinance and the zoning plan, and there's no impacts to the surrounding land uses, and there's no detriment to the neighborhood. So we feel that the site is uh particularly suitable for the project, and the proposed use variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Okay, Mr. Antisell, a couple of questions, when was the last time uh you were at the property?
Uh this past Monday.
Okay, and when you were at the property, what, what time were you there?
I was there around uh twelve thirty, one o'clock.
And can you describe the general condition of the parking lot as far as the number of vehicles in the entire parking lot, whether there was adequate parking to service all of the businesses within that parking lot?
Uh yes, in the front parking lot, which has um a total of fifty seven spaces, um there were approximately nine vehicles parked in that parking lot. In the rear parking facility behind the building, which has twenty two spaces for employees, about half of those were occupied. And in this parking area, there were the uh four passenger cars that are, you are shown on the right side of the screen, and the school buses that we brought onto site to depict how they would look. Um other than that, there were not many cars on the site.
Okay, and, and also, when you testified concerning the uses on the property, the, the various businesses, uh is it fair to say that, that some of those businesses uh have uh heavier traffic and customers in the morning, such as uh the cleaners and the tailor and the fitness center, and some of them would have uh greater attendance in the evening, like the restaurants?
Yes, yeah, I mean, it's actually a good mix of uses on the site where they u- each use parking at different times of the day.
And if we were to uh get the variance to allow the parking, did you also measure how many parking spaces would actually be needed to handle those fifteen buses?
Uh yes, uh each bus is approximately nine feet in width, so, and the parking spaces out there are nine feet in width, so ideally, we'd wanna have about twelve feet in width for each school bus. So we would need eleven spaces on the one side to park the eight school buses and um ten spaces on the other side to park seven of the school buses, so we'd need a total of twenty one.
So we would be using twenty one out of the hundred and thirty five parking spaces, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and uh in your opinion, would it be appropriate to uh put markings out there either by painting or by signage uh so that those are the designated school bus parking spaces, so that uh A, the employees know where they have to park, but also have other people come onto the site, they know that those are the designated parking spaces?
Yes, we can easily mark that, and, and also, these spaces are the ones that are furthest from the building, and they're also the furthest from the entrance, so these are the, probably the least desirable spaces on the site for the public to park in.
Thank you, Mr. Antisell, uh I have no further questions. Uh I would like to just uh at this point, just make some comment regarding the uh historic preservation advisory commission report and uh which was attached to the TRC report, and there are certain comments in there, and quite frankly, uh the historic advisory commission doesn't want any full-size buses charter or tour, tour buses. Uh we are not proposing to have any, I just wanna make it clear, if a, if a bus pulls into that parking lot, that is not our bus, we can't control that, nor can the uh I don't think the zoning board can control that if, if they were going to the Krauser's or something like that. Uh also, there may be reasons for box trucks or tractor trailers, which is mentioned in the report to be prohibited. Again, that has nothing to do with this application, and I think that's something probably beyond the jurisdiction of the board. Uh the item number three, we are agreeable to, which is a max of fifteen buses and their twenty passenger or less. Uh we, we have designated the parking area, uh and I think that the most appropriate area is actually the, the area where we're showing, rather than to move them to the fifteen spaces or the spaces closer to the building. And the reason I say that is that uh as Mr. Antisell said, uh those spaces are never used. If we move them closer to the building, it may be problematic, so we would propose that the buses be parked where they are set forth in the uh photograph A three. Uh the other request uh was that there is no maintenance of the buses beyond general cleaning, we're agreeable to that, uh that the buses are gonna be operational, there's no issue with that, and obviously, if the we have no objection to uh agreeing that if our lease is terminated and we are no longer a tenant in the building, that we would then uh remove all of the buses. So that deals with the comments of the uh historic advisory commission, and with that, uh that concludes my uh presentation this evening.
Okay, are there uh questions for the board?
Yeah.
I have about a million of them. Um on this same historic preservation advisory commission, uh it's down at the bottom of the eight, eight items, it says that the vegetation was removed, but you're saying it's thick in there, so what, what is it?
If you look at the picture that's on your screen right now, that was taken on this Monday.
Okay, and you can see buildings right there on the left-hand side.
I can see the, on the left-hand side is the Cube Smart building that was shown, that is there and was shown in the previous aerial too.
Okay, um so if there's not gonna be any maintenance, what happens when you show up in the morning and you have a flat tire, what, what happens then?
That, that I don't think is, is considered maintenance, what I think what they're, what the historic advisory commission was concerned about is that uh the vehicles will not be serviced, there will be no oil changes, there will be no washing of the vehicles or anything of that nature, obviously, if there's a flat tire, uh we'd have to call somebody in to repair the tires so the bus can get back on the road, just like if there was a car at the restaurant and at that evenings, they had a flat tire, uh they'd either have to repair it or call somebody in to repair it and, and then move on to leave the site. Uh but what we're talking about is those vehicles will not be serviced or washed or anything else on that property.
Okay, so it's possible there could be a rattle wrench banging away at six o'clock in the morning with a flat tire. Also, the starting fluid, uh starting in the winter, a lot of times they don't start, is there, what do you, what do you do with that, I mean, does he have a maintenance crew?
I had, I would defer to Mr. Ali, i- if your vehicles don't start, Mr. Ali, do you have to bring in somebody to start the vehicles? Do you have a mechanic, or how is that dealt with?
I have, I have my own jumper, self jumper, just I put it in the battery and it start my bus.
Okay, all right. Fueling. Do you do any fueling on, on the site? You have no condition? You have no problem with us making a condition of that, there won't be any fueling, right?
No.
No fueling.
Okay, um with fifteen buses uh starting up in the morning, that, the air is gonna get awful thick in there, and if it's, if it's as thick, if the, if the trees and everything is, are as heavy as you say they are, that, that air could get fairly thick and poisonous in there, do you, have you thought about that?
Mr. Rich, uh he indicated that they would be over the course of an hour, no, but not all fifteen buses are gonna or drivers are coming at seven o'clock and starting all buses at seven o'clock, he indicated that the buses will start leaving from the site anywhere between seven and eight o'clock, so they would be spread out uh over that period of time.
And there is, and, and not all the buses have routes, not all the fifteen buses are leaving, they don't leave all of them, because I don't have that many routes.
Okay.
Like uh three, four, up to five buses they leaves in the morning.
Okay, do you own Sunset Transportation?
Who?
Sunset Transportation, you have four buses parked in there at five o'clock.
No, I don't own them.
Okay, so you have four buses in there right now, that you don't even know who they belong to, that, correct?
They know who's belonged to, because he rented from the owner of the buildings.
Say that again?
Okay, Sunset, I know him very well, and he is paying the rent to the owner of the building. He's not paying it to me.
Okay, so out of the fifteen buses you want there then, will, will they all be your company or his, partial his?
Uh if I don't have all my company's buses, he can park. He can park four, three, whatever, until fifteen buses. If I have like eleven buses and he asks me to park here four, he, anyway, he can come and he pay the owner, he doesn't pay me.
Okay, I guess that's kinda what I'm getting at, so if Montauk and First Student and all the other bus companies start seeing buses parked there, how are, what are you gonna do?
Uh, I'm not allowed. They are not allowed, because this is my relatives. He's my relatives and I know him very well, he's from my country, he mark with me.
But Mr. Rich. Mr. Rich, the application is, is to park fifteen buses in that location, I was unaware that it could possibly be somebody else's buses, but, but the application is for fifteen buses, and it's also fifteen of the small buses that are shown on the plan. Uh I am sure Montauk has both large buses and small buses, quite frankly, they have a rather large facility within town, I don't think they need to park on this site, I don't know where First Student operates.
That's right.
The application really is to restrict the number of buses to fifteen and to restrict them to that location.
But that's not exactly true. This is a gentleman making the application, we're not hearing an application for any number of bus companies to come in here and park, just so the number stays at fifteen. This is an application for his company.
That is correct, and, and if, if the board feels that, that only buses from his company uh can park on there, that's a, an appropriate condition that the board can impose, again, he had indicated to, to, in his application and also to me, that he basically has twenty seven buses and that there will be fifteen on site.
Does he have another facility?
No, no, I don't have it.
No, his testimony is that he has twenty seven buses, fifteen of them he's seeking to park here, the other twelve buses, the drivers take home and keep them at their houses where they're in certain municipalities, they're allowed to park them either on the side of their houses or on the street or in the driveways, but uh he has no other facility.
So if he operates that way, he apparently um doesn't have a, a quote bus headquarters, like you mentioned, Montauk does, where does he do the maintenance that has to be done on these buses?
He takes them out to have them serviced uh at, at service stations to service buses. They're not done on site.
We tell you, you want me to tell you where I take them?
Sure.
Yes, I take them to six eight six, leaving Sun Avenue in North Brunswick, my mechanic. That's my mechanic, I take them over there.
I apologize, Mr. Rich, if you have other questions, I didn't mean to butt in.
Oh no, you're doing a good job, go ahead.
Well, the other thing, why, why did you choose this site to park your buses, what makes it particularly suitable?
Good, that's a good question, I have my community. We have a, we have, we rented a place over there, upstairs, for my community. That's why we knew that spot, and I spoke to the owner and he said, yeah, this parking is empty and he's not using it, I told him, okay, can I park my school bus, he said, no problem.
Yeah, but your, your buses deliver kids to schools in the area, right? What, what makes this a, a central point to bring these buses here as opposed to another location somewhere else? Why this location?
This is a valuable location, oh, it's an available location I found. Jersey Avenue, I went to Jersey Avenue, I didn't find in New Brunswick. I went to uh North Brunswick, I was uh parking over there. They raised uh renting price and I quit. Just I was looking around and I found this place, I told you that we have our community, we are renting a place over there, and when I saw this parking, I spoke to the owner and he told me, yes, it's available.
I, the, the other thing, uh there is a pretty dense uh crop of trees around the site at the moment. Uh I remember another application we had years ago for that self-storage facility that wanted to put up a uh cellphone tower that's in that stack that's there. Debate we had was whether to make them put up a tree instead of that smokestack, and the general consensus was that an evergreen tree would be so out of character there that it wouldn't, wouldn't serve its purpose. The point I'm getting is ninety-nine and a half percent of that vegetation has enough, the trees has no vegetation on it for approximately half of the year, so I know for a fact, because the buses have been parked there before, those buses are very visible when the leaves are not on the trees. The other thing is, do you have a circulation plan about how these buses are coming? How are they traveling through the parking lot, are they going behind the building and out the driveway? Or are they going in front of the stores, or are they going in the aisle way, cartway that's closer to Kennedy Boulevard? And you know, is there uh any kind of traffic testimony that would address how they may or may not mix with the patrons in the shopping center when it is busier and it is often busier than nine cars in the front parking lot? So how is that circulation gonna be handled? It's, in the morning, it might not be such an issue, but if you're dealing with just school kids and you're back there between three and five o'clock in the afternoon, uh then it may be. And has there been a traffic, uh anybody look at the traffic when they come out of the driveway? And whether they need to make a left turn onto Kennedy Boulevard, which isn't quite so easy probably for a bus as it might seem, this is a pretty well-traveled uh street.
Mr. Chairman, we have not done a, a traffic analysis, uh if the board feels that is important in their consideration, uh we would be happy to do one and come back and present the, the report and also testimony.
I will see, are there other board questions?
I think that it would be worthwhile, because I had another question regarding the circulation. Uh you mentioned that the timing of when the buses, they, they would load up, they would come to load up the buses around between seven and eight, so once they drop off the students, they would be returning these buses back to the parking lot? the students, they would be returning these buses back to the parking lot?
Listen to me, yes. After we finish dropping the kids' homes, they come and they park the buses.
So they all would be, those fifteen uh, buses would be roughly uh, coming in uh, similar to, you know, close times to each other. So I'm again, I guess.
If you recall the testimony, Mr. Ali, he indicated that some of the drivers keep the buses during the day and don't come back until after their afternoon run. Some of them do return the buses in the morning to take their personal vehicles, leave and then come back and pick up the buses again.
Okay, I thought that was the ten out of the twenty-five. You're saying of the fifteen, there are some that would also be taking them home with them and and then only and keep them until they go to pick the students back up?
That was his testimony, yes, that some of the drivers do not come back after their morning run. They keep the bus all day and then do their afternoon run and then return in the afternoon after their afternoon run. Some of them, if they have things to do and they need their personal vehicles, will return the bus, get into their personal vehicles and do whatever they have to do during the day and then will come and pick up the bus.
Okay, I certainly think the circulation would be worthwhile because I'm just managing managing uh, who is parking in the in those spaces if they're being designated for the um, for the applicants to park his school buses. Then he he would need to make certain that only that others are not parking in that, in those spaces. I'm just wondering how to how how you manage that if it's and manage those parking spaces.
As Mr. Anasell indicated and we can, we could either mark each one of those spaces as uh, with a sign, bus parking only, or and we can also paint uh, on the blacktop bus parking only, uh, so that that area would be uh, really known uh, to the public as being restricted only to the buses. That that can be easily resolved. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, even at the where the parking spaces begin, we can have an outward facing sign indicating bus parking only so that uh, anybody else coming onto the site would not park there. And as Mr. Anasell stated, uh, anybody coming to that property, that's the last place they would park anyway because it's so far away from the building.
Okay, and then I guess that another thing is, so i- if when whenever the the lease was terminated, then those the the request to to be able to park that would would expire with with that, how how does that work?
Yeah, he, Mr. Ali had indicated that if his lease, uh, were, if he's not going to be conducting his bus operations from the office within the building, that he would agree to remove or terminate the parking of the buses. In other words, if he leaves as a tenant, he, everything goes.
Okay.
One else.
I I have three quick questions and and Mr. Lanford, if you're coming back and um, it it's a better address it next time, just just let me know. Um, so twelve of the twenty-seven buses will be parked at the driver's home. What would happen if one of those drivers could no longer park the vehicle with them?
He can't park it here. Uh, your resolution would be, and what we're asking for approval for is fifteen buses. Uh, if for some reason we wanted to park more buses there, we'd have to make a brand-new application and ask for that, but we're asking for fifteen and that would be the condition of approval.
Okay, um, and and with this designated area for the buses, um, is a parking variance required for the shopping center?
I don't know the answer to that, but I I probably would have to look into that uh, as part of what was originally approved with the shopping center thirty-some years ago.
Yeah, if I could speak to that real quick because it's addressed in the TRC report. Um, and it's a good question because uh, the testimony has been provided tonight. I heard that with the bus parking, that'd take up twenty-one spaces. And then I was gonna have a follow-up question of just to confirm, how many spaces then are going to be taken up uh, for the parking, uh, the the passenger vehicles for the drivers? Would that be fifteen?
No, be- because once a bus pulls out, uh, the the employees or the drivers of the buses could park in the same spaces where the buses are now parked. You're you're not gonna leave those spaces.
I would, uh, they would, they would move, they would take the bus, park it, like, leave it and then hop back in their vehicle and put the car back and then hop back in the bus and go?
No, not necessarily. First of all, Mr. Healy, there's twenty-one parking spaces that would would encompass the fifteen buses. Uh, and we, and if, for example, we we show one more parking space because we have eleven and ten on the side that there's ten, we show one more space. If the first driver comes in in the morning and his vehicle, he parks in the first space, he takes his bus and leaves, the next driver comes, there's there's an empty space. There will likely be empty spaces because if a bus pulls out, it takes one and a half spaces. So those same spaces can be used by the drivers of the vehicles as well as the buses. We don't need thirty spaces. We just need those twenty-one spaces.
Okay, so you're you're, so you'd be committing to both the buses and the vehicles and their cars not taking up more than twenty-one?
That's correct.
Okay, so so um, what I would suggest then is is assuming the board asks you to come back, we're gonna need a a calculation of the parking of the uh, you know, based on the square footage of the shopping center and what that parking requirement comes out to be. Um, because then I'm, if you have a hundred and thirty-five on site, a hundred and thirty-six? It's one thirty, one thirty-five, so you're taking up twenty-one. That means you have a hundred and four remaining for the shopping center. So I think you need to prove whether you need a a parking variance.
We we have a hundred and, we have a hundred and we're taking out twenty-one out of a hundred and thirty-five, we'd have a hundred and fourteen left, not a hundred and four.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a, yeah, you're right. Okay. Whichever the math is, sorry. Uh, but you need to prove that that shopping center is still going to comply. Sorry, Mr. Mechanic, but I I wanted to clarify your your question because it was something that they have to address.
Okay, right, thank you. And my, you you touched on my third question was where will the bus driver park, uh, drivers park? So that was addressed. Thank you. No more questions.
I uh, I would like to make it clear in my mind, I think that I thought the testimony was that those spaces in the back like that will be, would, were to be designated for buses. All right, I would not want to see drivers' cars interchanging, you know, having them parking interchangeably. When a bus leaves, a driver's car might go into space. Because, you know, y- you have all kinds of changes often in school schedules where a bus might be coming back sooner or or whatever. It's either for the buses back there or it's not. Cars and the drivers can park the way it's shown on your exhibit. But I don't see any, I don't see it being very wise to be mixing the cars and the buses. You know, what we're doing here, what we're effectively doing here, which I have real reservations about, is we're creating a bus company in a retail shopping center, basically, in an office center in a place uh, where we just gave a recent approval to a uh, business on the, on the second floor, whatever you wanna call it, a catering business, uh, a conv- a a meeting hall business and so on. And and these things don't quite, in my mind, you haven't shown me how these things coincide with each other and complement each other. A a bus company is a bus company. My my gut feeling is you should find a bus company place, a place in a, an industrial zone to have a bus company. You know, it's a little hard to say these buses are going to the drivers' homes and they're sitting in this parking lot and they're never gonna break down and they're never gonna work on them there. It's it's an, it's an unenforceable issue for, I I would think, from the town's point of view. And it seems to me it's ripe for a degradation of the shopping center. But, you know, we'll see. Convince me. I'm not convinced at the mo- moment, so maybe it's good that you might have to come back again.
Uh, I under- I understand your concerns, Mr. Thomas. Uh, I do think a a traffic analysis probably would help in in dealing with that and some of the other questions that you raised, I think we can address when we return.
Any other board questions?
Yeah, I just wanna piggyback on that because I I just think it's unrealistic to expect that the drivers, the bus drivers will will be parking their cars in the, only in the spots where their where their buses, just just the whole coordination of that to to ensure that. I I just think that's unrealistic to expect that they're gonna take up those those spaces and when a bus is leaving, that cars will park in a, in a vacant uh, uh, lot where where a bus has already left. I just think that that's unrealistic, that they would not use other parking spaces um, to do that, the whole coordination of that.
And and the answer to that may be in a traffic analysis and a review of that facility at at various times uh, to see if there's available parking spaces for the bus drivers to park elsewhere, which would not adversely affect the use of the shopping center. So that's what we will look at.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you raise an excellent point about this board's approval of a company um, under ZBA twenty dash zero 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 two one DJs LLC, which was approved. I believe it was late last year. Uh, there were a couple of conditions of approval that Mr. Lanford should be part of the parking analysis. As part of the condition of approval, that facility will have a maximum capacity of a hundred and fifty occupants. The applicant was to provide valet service for all events exceeding seventy-five people. And for events of seventy-five people or less, the applicant shall reserve parking in the rear of the building for the employees only. In the event of seventy-five people or more, the valet service was to guide the people to the rear of the property. So that some, those parking spaces, as was contemplated by this board, was to be used by that catering facility. Um, so that's something that, excuse me, that's something that um, that resolution um, is gonna be, I think, um, um, relevant to the parking analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Legana. If Mr. Healy can forward to me a copy of that resolution, I uh, I did not handle that application. I was uh, not uh, aware of those conditions, but I do think you're right, they're relevant. And if Mr. Healy can send me that resolution, I can send it to my traffic consultant to incorporate that in his or her analysis.
Will do.
The the one other last concern too that I had is we're asking, as Cheryl mentioned, that you know, drivers park their cars one place, buses park another place, and we're depending on people to follow the uh, guidelines. And we we just according to the applicant's testimony, found out he he's not necessarily going to be there all the time. And I have even more concerns of some of the things happening the way they should when there's no supervision. You know, maybe you can address that the next time too. Absentee ownership, I don't think is is a good idea either.
I will put that on my list.
Any other, any other things from the board? Would would you like to hear from the public if there is any?
Uh, we we should.
See if there's any questions. But before we do that, um, since this is obviously going to get carried now and Christine's gonna have to bring up the screen. Um, Mr. Lanford, is there a a date that you have in mind to carry this to?
Well, I I think if we're I I think we would need a minimum of sixty days to to hire a traffic consultant to do an analysis and probably do more than one site visit. Uh, because I I don't think one site visit would would probably satisfy the board. I think they'd have to visit the site on more than one occasion to see what's going on there and then be able to report back to the board. So I would think you're looking at at least uh, July and
Yeah, let's look at that first, the first meeting in July, Christine, is that?
Or the second, either one.
So what I would suggest is we um, move it to July first. Does that work for you, Mr. Lanford?
You have something on July fifteenth?
We have, we have, we have something on every date.
All right.
So for for, through July, so.
All right, if if July first is the date, we will try to make it. If for some reason, uh, we can't get all of the information by that time, we'll have to, I'll have a conversation with you about moving it, but we will try to accommodate you.
Okay, so we'll do the notice after uh, we open to the public, but that'll give Christine the opportunity to get the screen ready.
Okay.
Yep, go ahead.
Are there any other board questions? Let's open quickly to the public. If there is any public comment, then the applicant can take that into consideration to have that taken care of. So we'll open to the public for questions or comments on this application.
And we do have uh, two people with their hand raised again to the public. If you're on Webex, you can do the raised hand function. If you're calling in, you can press star three. I'm gonna go with Mr. Foster. Mr. Foster, you're on, Greg Foster, unmuted.
Okay, thank you. I'm at thirty-nine Libet Drive in town here. Sorry, I can't call up my camera. For some reason, it's not available on the bottom. Uh, but I do have a couple of quick questions. One is, do any of these buses have a diesel engine? And I'm not talking about a big thirty-passenger bus. I'm talking about the smaller fifteen or twenty-passenger buses that sometimes do have a diesel engine. Do
No.
Because my concern is diesel engines in the winter need to have power. They need to have electric to plug into. And in the wintertime, if there's a diesel engine out there, I'm concerned about how they would get power out there to take care of it.
His answer was no, there aren't, there are no diesel engines.
Okay, can he guarantee that? Because, you know, sometimes these smaller buses do have a diesel engine, especially some of the Ford sometimes do. And uh, that's one concern. The other thing that I'm kind of confused about is why the board is working with the people that are renting the spaces when at the moment their buses are in those spaces and it's really the owner of the building that's renting the spaces to two different companies without board approval. So I'm very confused about that. Thank you. Is there any uh?
Well,
I can, I can, I can, I can respond to that partially. Uh, I was uh, the the township, I don't know anything about the other bus company. Uh, as far as my client, uh, he leased space in the building, which he is allowed to do. He then brought some buses onto the property, which uh, he was not allowed to do. Uh, he did receive a violation notice from the township. The township diligently did their job and upon receiving that violation notice, uh, he made an application to the zoning board for the ability to park those buses on the property. Uh, an application for the parking of the buses can be made either by the owner of the property or by the applicant. And in this case, the applicant has made the application.
Um, okay, but the buses are still parked there, so nothing has been approved. And every time I go down JFK, I see the yellow buses parked there. So I'm a little confused. Thank you.
But just to clarify, sir, every day that those buses are there is a new violation.
Okay, but obviously, the people that own the buses don't care about the violations. They're not moving buses out of there. They've only applied for a change in the zone. What makes us believe that they will be that honest or not when and or if they get approval?
Well, ob- obviously, if if the the application is denied, the buses would have to leave. Uh, we have indicated to the township, uh, if they would con- consider uh, you know, leaving the buses there while the application was pending, and that's what we've done. Uh, because again, i- if they have to move now, that they don't have a place to go. And they do provide a service to uh, delivering these kids to the school. So that's why they're there now. But again, if the application was denied, the buses would be gone.
Okay, thank you for the information.
And about my buses, yes, I'm trying to clarify to the gentleman. I don't have, I don't deal with diesel.
Okay, Mark, we have another one.
Okay, it looks like Arnold Schmidt's hand is still up. I'm going to call on Arnold Schmidt. I'm going to unmute you right now. Mr. Schmidt, do you have any comments or questions on this application? You're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Wonderful. Okay, I figured out the system. I have no questions right now. I'm just trying to figure out the system. I couldn't get it working before. So now I've taken my headphones off. I'm good to go, but I have no questions right now. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, scanning. I do not see anybody else with their hand raised for this application.
Okay, then we'll close the public. And then before we wrap this application up for the night, I have a question for Daniel.
Sir.
Are we to, as the planner mentioned, so are we to seriously consider this application as being inherently beneficial?
That's a, that's a very good question, sir. My reading of Scholastic Bus, it does say that it, it should be considered an inherently beneficial use. Scholastic Bus dealt with similar facts because there was a, a request to put buses in an industrial zone away from the school. And the standard that the case determined to be relevant was whether or not it is necessarily uh, ancillary to the uh, inherently beneficial use uh, itself. And essentially, this would ride the coattails of the inherently beneficial use status. So um, the focus of this board should really be on the negative criteria, and that is the substantial impact to the surrounding neighborhood and to the intent of the zone plan and master plan. I believe the line of questioning with regard to parking and site circulation are relevant to the uh, negative criteria. And the board has done an excellent job in focusing its questions to that negative criteria.
Okay, then we are next going to meet the, with you, what we decide, July?
July one.
July first. Okay, move on to the next application. Thank you.
Uh.
He needs to read.
Mr. Thomas, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're fading out.
I have to read what, I have to read for it to be moved to July first for those people who are calling in and cannot see.
Okay.
So it's, okay, so the Saha Rose uh, will be moved to July first. Anybody wishing to partake in that meeting, first of all, you can go to the township website at www dot Franklin TWPNJ dot org. On the night of the meeting, you will see the link information that I'm about to read because it's about thirty, thirty digits long. So that would make it much easier for people. For anybody calling in, the number will also be available. With all of that said, I'm going to read now. For the attendees that wish to come on July first, you can get in through the link, the Webex link at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash Franklin TWPNJ dot Webex dot com forward slash Franklin TWPNJ forward slash onstage forward slash G period P H P question mark capital M capital T capital I capital D the equal sign E D eight B A four A zero seven E D E four B E seven nine F one six A four eight eight zero two two nine A D nine nine five. For those of you wishing to call in for that meeting, you can call in on four zero eight four one eight nine three eight eight. And the access code is one two nine seven two one one three three four. So again, the meeting for July, well, Thursday, July first at seven thirty PM through Webex will have to be done uh, with the information I just gave. And then easier is to go in through the township's website and on that evening, it gives you the links to click in. If you wish to call me, you can reach me, Christine Woodbury, at seven three two eight seven three two five zero zero. My extension is six two one five. Okay, Mr. Thomas.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thomas, before, before you close, I don't know if you need an extension of time, but for the record, I will grant the board an extension of time within which to act in this matter through the end of July of two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, thanks for bringing that up. It used to be on the uh, agenda. I see it's not on there now, so we wouldn't have known. Okay, moving forward. Data Bagwan Vignan Institute, ZBA nineteen oh 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 forty. D three conditional use variance, C variance and site plan, which the applicant is asking to construct a twenty-one thousand eighty-three square foot place of worship with parking lot and five-foot monument sign at six thirty South Middle Bush Road Somerset. Block thirty-seven point oh two lot forty-six point oh three, and so they carried from April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one with no notification needed. Okay. If we do too much further with this, I'll actually be able to pronounce the name of it properly.
Uh, well, I hope we can wrap this up in the next few meetings, Mr. Chairman. We're trying. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this I believe is our, at least our fifth meeting in this matter. Uh, we have previously presented to the board the testimony of our architect. We've had at least two, maybe three meetings with our site engineer. And the applicant testified at the last meeting concerning the uh, operation of the house of worship. Uh, this evening, uh, I intend to present one witness, which is Elizabeth Dolan, concerning the issue of traffic. Uh, if we can have Ms. Dolan brought in and sworn.
Mr. Lanford, before that begins, I just wanted to make you aware that both Cheryl Bethia, as well as Kunalak here, have answered, uh, have provided certificates of authenticity that they've listened to the previous testimony. So they are able to vote tonight if they should need to be.
I don't think that'll happen tonight. But thank you, Miss Woodbury. Can we have Ms. Dolan brought in? Oh, she's here. Can we ever sworn?
Sure. Um, Mr. Lanford, real quick, there was some email communications back and forth today. Looks like that the um, issue, the evidentiary issue would not be dealt with tonight. Uh, Mark, can we bring on Ms. Bailey real quick? I just want to confirm that. Will do. I'm going to bring in um. You bring in both objectives, councils, and make them parallel, please. They'll be here for any objections. Okay, they're both in. Hey, Ms. Bailey, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Good evening.
Okay, great. Uh, Ms. Bailey, just to confirm, there was some communications made to me, uh, addressed to me about some evidentiary issues. Um, I was prepared to um, discuss this evening, but apparently uh, you are okay with um, reserving that until your case in chief. Is that correct?
That's right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying that point. Um, Mr. Lanford, um, you can proceed with your uh, case in chief. You have uh, your traffic expert?
That is correct, Ms. Dolan.
Ms. Dolan, thank you. Do you swear for the testimony you're about to give? It would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
You please state your name and spell your last and provide us with your professional address, please.
Elizabeth Dolan, D O L A N, Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers LLC, one eighty-one West High Street in Somerville, New Jersey.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan.
Ms. Dolan, uh, you are a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And you specialize in any particular area?
Traffic engineering.
Okay, and can you very briefly give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Yes, I have a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers. I've been practicing traffic engineering for thirty-four years, I think, um, in New Jersey and um, licensed in New Jersey and neighboring states. My license is in good standing. I've testified in over two hundred and fifty municipalities throughout New Jersey and have been accepted um, as a traffic engineer in all cases.
It's, it's okay. We can accept that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Ms. Dolan, as I indicated in my opening, there have been numerous hearings uh, involving this application. Uh, you have been present during all of those hearings and have listened to the testimony of all of the previous witnesses?
Yes.
Okay, and you also met with the applicant concerning uh, the hours and the days in which the house of worship would operate. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And when you met with him in pre- preparing your traffic report, uh, the information that he provided to you in preparing your traffic report was consistent with the testimony that he gave at the last hearing, was it not?
Yes, on April fifteenth, yes.
Okay, now, can you indicate to the board uh, what you did in order to review this project for uh, the issue of traffic?
Yes, um, as we just talked about, I consulted with the project team to gain an understanding of the operation of the proposed facility. And at the April fifteenth uh, twenty twenty-one hearing, uh, the applicant provided an overview of the activity, which is primarily Friday evenings from six to ten PM, Saturdays from nine AM to nine PM, and Sundays from nine AM to nine PM. So this is an off-peak use in terms of traffic. Typically, we're looking at weekday morning and evening, peak commuting hours or Saturday midday. Um, and so primarily the activity that is going to be happening here will not coincide with the peak commuting hours Monday through Friday. Um, the activity associated with the proposed use um, is also not consistent, what is um, typically associated with a house of worship, where there's a start and end time associated with services. Rather, the um, activity is more uh, fluid. People are coming and going uh, during these different periods of activity, Friday evenings and on weekends. We had prepared and issued a November twenty-one, two thousand nineteen traffic study. It's taken a while to get here. Um, and that traffic study was based on um, counts that we performed not only for this application, and I know it's been discussed in prior hearings, but there's another house of worship app, uh, house of worship application on the other side of South Middle Bush. So we're involved in both applications. We performed counts in April two thousand nineteen. And for this specific application, our two thousand nineteen traffic study focused on a worst-case scenario. We assumed that the maximum capacity would arrive and depart in a one-hour period uh, during the one highest traffic hour on South Middle Bush. Um, during a Saturday uh, peak hour, we counted one thousand three hundred seventy-eight vehicles traveling two-way on South Middle Bush, so just under fourteen hundred vehicles. And that's a little lower than the recorded weekday peak hours of about eighteen hundred, closer to nineteen hundred vehicles. Um, so we assume that the facility would load up and unload in a one-hour period, and we calculated acceptable levels of service entering the site and a level of service E waiting to exit, uh, which would be a delay on site. Now, that's not expected to happen because as was uh, described at the last meeting and outlined in our traffic study, people are arriving and departing throughout these different periods. It's a gradual arrival/departure. There's not an intense arrival or departure, as would be associated with something like a Easter or, or uh, Christmas mass. Uh, so the analysis certainly is conservative and indicates that there's sufficient capacity on South Middle Bush Road to accommodate the movements. Um, as was described at the April hearing, if there were a high attendance activity, the applicant is willing to use a um, uh, police officer, off-duty police officer, to move traffic into and out of the site uh, to afford the gaps that aren't regularly available on South Middle Bush Road. Uh, but this is certainly not a um, a use that's going to impact the peak street activity on South Middle Bush Road. Instead, we're looking at Friday evenings um, and gradual activity throughout Saturday and Sunday. So there's not um, any uh, significant traffic impact. We had also talked about um, the need for a possible left-turn lane on South Middle Bush Road. Uh, that is not warranted unless we were actually experiencing a peak load for an event type of activity, which again, was testified to at prior hearings. Any event-type activity would not be happening on site. So I look at this as a uh, low-impact off-peak type of use. And uh, we are um, of, of course, working with the county on the approval for the South Middle Bush Road access. But in terms of the traffic impacts, this is a low-volume off-peak use. The parking that's proposed on site is in keeping with the anticipated demands. Uh, no parking is allowed or would be appropriate on South Middle Bush Road. So the parking that's proposed on site uh, certainly seems to be in keeping with the anticipated demands of this proposed use.
Now, Ms. Dolan, when we first submitted the application, uh, it was with a plan showing the widening of the existing driveway. Subsequent to that, uh, as a result of discussions with neighbors, uh, we agreed to relocate the driveway more central to the property. Uh, and you have seen the plan with a relocated driveway?
Yes.
Okay, and with respect to the relocated driveway, have you looked at uh, that relocated driveway? And does that driveway meet adequate, or provide adequate site distances for people uh, exiting that site?
Yes, and the county would certainly require those appropriate site triangles and site distances.
Okay, and you indicated that South Middle Bush Road is a county road and, and the county has jurisdiction with respect to what goes on at, at its roadway, correct?
Yes.
Okay, have you had any discussions with them about the left-turn lane? You indicated, in your opinion, it was not warranted. Have there been any discussions with them uh, concerning the left-turn lane?
Um, our office prepared a supplemental uh, letter that was submitted to the county, may have gotten to the town, I'm not sure, in July of two thousand twenty. Uh, because they were concerned about the coincident activity of this particular application with the site data application on the opposite side of South Middle Bush Road. So we provided a supplemental analysis to them to indicate that there was no coincident activity. Um, and again, to suggest that there was no need for a left-turn lane on South Middle Bush Road.
And have they responded to your July twenty twenty letter?
I have not seen a response to that. I'm not sure.
Okay, now, you, you mentioned that you are also uh, the traffic consultant for the site data application across the street, correct?
That's correct.
And you've indicated uh, that their operations are not uh, not totally consistent or different than our operations. Uh, and I know you have some information, and I think some of the board members had asked a question at a previous hearing uh, without going into a lot of detail. Uh, but uh, can you differentiate uh, the two projects and why they are uh, not identical as far as operations?
Uh, certainly. Um, and as, as with the, the current application that's before the board this evening, the site data application also has what we call floating activity, where people are coming and going at different times. There's no uh, uh, defined start time of a service. People come and they spend their time and then they leave. So um, site data as um, has presented to me, has activity of um, Monday, Tuesday, and Friday activity, uh, Wednesday activity, Thursday activity, which is not happening um, with this application. They also have a hundred to two hundred uh, devotees on Saturday, again, coming and going throughout the course of the day, um, and similar activity on Sunday. So um, both applications are similar in that they've got uh, no specific start times of services. They've got uh, people coming and going. Um, but the activity at site data is a lot more intensive Monday through Thursday, whereas this applicant is not having any activity uh, on weekdays.
Now, you indicated in your earlier testimony that you looked at the traffic uh, volumes that were going to be generated uh, as a result of our application, and you felt that uh, And you felt that the traffic on South Middle or South Middle Bush Road could handle the traffic as a result of this project, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, since you also did an analysis of the side-data project, and again, assuming, even though it's not part of this application, but assuming the side-data project went forward, did you do an analysis of both of those projects and its effect on South Middle Bush?
And that was exactly what the county had requested. And our analysis for both projects goes back to the counts from two thousand nineteen, which was pre-COVID. We included a background growth factor. What we had found prior to COVID was that the background growth rates haven't been achieved. Traffic was actually kind of plateauing. Now that we've gotten to COVID impacts, traffic volumes have dropped off. So I think that it's a very conservative analysis that we've presented because we provided a one percent per year background growth rate for over two years. So I think that kind of brings us over the COVID volumes that we're experiencing now because we had great volumes from two thousand nineteen. We expanded them by one percent per year. And again, a very conservative analysis, assuming that the site will load up at once as if it were a church or synagogue with a service start and end time. And that's not really what's going to happen. So our analysis, I believe, is an over-projection of activity and quite conservative, and concludes that there's ample capacity on South Middle Bush Road, even at pre-COVID volumes, to accommodate the activity associated with this use.
And you heard the testimony that there will be a slight spike in attendance at the facility when the priest comes from India twice a year, and that's when they have the two Friday nights and the Saturday and Sunday. And the witness at the last meeting indicated that if it is necessary, that they would hire police officers to monitor traffic. And you feel that is appropriate, an appropriate way to deal with a potential of a spike in traffic for those holy days?
Yes, I do believe that that is appropriate to accommodate primarily the discharge from the site. So I think that that's a great thing to provide for those peak activity periods.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan, I have no further questions. Okay, board members, any questions?
Yeah, this is Kunal. Before a question, I have a comment. I believe that when you mentioned hundred to two hundred devotees, do you mean hundred to two hundred cars or total devotees spread across? Because there's a reason I'm asking this question that are expected.
We had used three people per vehicle based on the township ordinance parking requirement, based on the attendee level. So that's where the number of attendees is divided by three to get to the number of cars.
Right, so my being from a same faith, and I'm also thinking about the other religious institution being set on across the road, particularly on Thursdays, that institute is likely to have a lot more traffic than just two hundred total people coming in. And about this particular case, on religious festival days, it is, if you're counting just two hundred or so, that is gross under calculation, in my humble opinion. And I think maybe look at some other temples in the region. You know, there's Durga Temple down in South Brunswick and so on. So though the traffic is managed there, I do understand they have a police officer who comes and there's a parking that they use. But to do a comprehensive study about South Middle Bush, because in South Middle Bush, you don't have that opportunity, that there's no other parking lot. What will then tend to happen is people will park on the access road on the side of it, which may spill outside too. It's just a concern I'm trying to raise, having seen some patterns myself.
Well, I think the goal here is to provide the parking on-site that's needed to not have spill over. Obviously, we can't park on South Middle Bush Road. And the projections that you heard at the April fifteenth hearing are based on what the anticipated attendance levels are. So that's what we're looking to accommodate.
Okay, other questions?
I have two quick questions for Ms. Dolan. So it was, previous testimony was given that at the peak, we'll see two hundred and fifty individuals coming to the house of worship. And based on the ordinance that equates to eighty-three parking spaces or cars to parking spaces, which the site doesn't accommodate for, based on your experience with industry standards, I T E, and your many years of experience, is eighty-three parking spaces typical for a twenty-one thousand square foot house of worship?
The the building area, I T E tells you to be careful of when you're looking at the parking requirements. Typically, I T E parking is based on the seating capacity because I T E acknowledges that the building areas vary because of the ancillary facilities. So the building area in this case, I know, is larger. And we heard some testimony about the activities that require the larger area. So I T E tells you to kind of look more at the seating capacity versus the building area because the building areas vary with the ancillary facilities.
But in your opinion, you think that the eighty-three parking spaces would be sufficient for this use, this building?
Yes, based on this particular use, yeah. I understand it's a larger building area, but based on my understanding of the anticipated use and the attendance anticipation, this would be appropriate, yes.
And then my second question, it was mentioned that, you know, for larger events, a police officer could be hired to direct traffic. My question is, in this area, especially with the two houses of worship, it's going to become very, you know, possibly congested. So we have this house of worship, which possibly could require a police assistance. We have the farm next door who does put on events throughout the summer and the fall and requires a police presence. And I'm just going to go on a limb a little bit, saying that maybe the next application we see for the house of worship across the street could also require a police presence. It's three uses very close together that could possibly require a police presence.
So this particular application is twice a year and spring and summer. And I don't have the notes in front of me for the other house of worship application. I'm sorry, but I'll be before you before that application in a few months. So this is twice a year. And certainly, it would have to be coordinated, but I know it's a three-day, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so it might coincide with some farm activity. I don't know the specifics of that. But I would think that the police department would, you know, be able to coordinate that. The, it's really the outbound activity for this site that would necessitate that activity to create the gaps in the South Middle Bush traffic to allow people to get out. It's not a problem getting in. Same would be applicable to the farm activity and the other house of worship activity. So it's really creating those gaps in the South Middle Bush traffic to allow people to get out. And that's what we'd be looking at. But in this case, it's only two times per year, two weekends.
Understood, and thank you for that. I have one last question, and this is kind of a little bit of a far-fetched scenario, so I apologize. But taking into consideration the two houses of worship, how far are we away from meeting the necessary warrants for a traffic signal in this general location?
Oh, we're very far away from that. Yeah, the traffic volumes would have to be sustained on the outbound driveway approaches over at least a peak hour, or better to qualify for a traffic signal would be over four hours. They would have to be at a sustained level to meet the warrants for traffic signalization. That's a, that's a, based on the manual on uniform traffic control devices. I don't see either of these driveways qualifying for a traffic signal.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have just a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Ms. Dolan, just a couple of points of clarification. You just stated that there, you anticipate a maximum of eighty-three vehicles on-site when there is a maximum capacity of two hundred and fifty attendees. Am I stating that correctly?
Yes, I believe that's the correct calculation.
Yeah, Daniel, I said that, and that's two fifty divided by three is eighty-three point three three.
Okay, so two fifty, and those are for the two high holy days, twice a year on a Saturday and Sunday?
Yes.
Okay, and you anticipate, as part of your calculations, the worst-case scenario, all eighty-three vehicles showing up at once?
That's how we, that's how we ran the numbers, yes.
You anticipate, as part of your report, you anticipate on a typical Saturday, a hundred and fifty people showing up? And that equated to fifty vehicles possibly entering the site in one hour or leaving in one hour, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Is eighty-three vehicles the maximum? Let me just strike that. What is the available parking on the site?
A hundred and fifty-six parking spaces, I believe, Lagan.
One fifty-six total. In your, in your opinion, is the eighty-three vehicles showing up at a particular point in time the maximum that the site can accommodate in terms of site circulation and safety?
Well, I think the site circulation and safety is based on the site plan itself in terms of the adequacy of the circulation and the appropriate design. The capacity that we ran is theoretical, so it's sort of two different things.
Okay, so in your opinion, if more than eighty-three vehicles show up at once, the site can accommodate it?
Well, I don't know that eighty-three vehicles would show up at once, but we're providing a parking capacity to accommodate that activity. So it's sort of, you can't quite equate generation and parking. But the idea is that we can accommodate and bring in, from a capacity perspective, those fifty vehicles and have them all exiting at the same time without a problem. And we can circulate the parking. I'm sorry, we could circulate the activity because we've got an appropriately designed facility.
And the same holds true with the eighty-three vehicles?
Yes.
Is there a number at which point you do not feel comfortable that the site would accommodate the vehicles showing up at one site at one time?
Well.
Basically, is there a tipping point? Do you feel that there's a tipping point that the site, you know, will not be able to accommodate a certain amount of vehicles showing up at one site? In your, in your review and in your opinion?
Well, based on the anticipated operation and the fact that people are gradually arriving and departing, kind of, we've looked at a load of fifty vehicles in an hour. So if it's fifty, if it's sixty, if it's seventy, I think we're still going to come out with the same level of service calculation. So I don't, I don't see that there's a problem in terms of a load in a particular hour. We happen to hone in on fifty, but the results would be the same if it were sixty or seventy. So I don't, I don't see a problem with the, the activity at the driveway. And as we had indicated at the last hearing, if there's a peak event with more activity, we'll have a police officer present to help meter the people out of the site. And that's really, that's really the issue, is getting the people out so they don't have to wait too long to get out onto South Middle Bush.
What can we define what a large event would be? How many people do you think that would require the police officer, just so the board has some specifics as to perhaps imposing a condition?
Sure, I think that was the three-day program that is anticipated twice a year. It would be a three-day event, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, with a maximum of two hundred and fifty people. And we took that two hundred and fifty people, divided it by three, we've got eighty-five vehicles. So that's where that parking number comes into play.
So in your opinion, eighty-five vehicles would require a police detail there to help with the site circulation?
It might, and it's really, again, it's to get the people out of the site. It's not an impediment to South Middle Bush Road traffic. It's to just help people get out of the site. And again, that assumes that we're at that peak volume of thirteen seventy-eight vehicles on South Middle Bush Road on a Saturday. That's the absolute peak hour. But the volumes range from five hundred to eight hundred to a thousand to twelve hundred. So, you know, we ran that capacity analysis based on thirteen seventy-eight. That was the busiest one hour on Saturday. But every other hour sees much lower volume on South Middle Bush Road, which means that there's more capacity to allow the discharge of volume from the site.
Ms. Lagan, if I also may add, because I've handled numerous houses of worship in Franklin Township, and some of them on their high holy days have rather large gatherings. And what Franklin does require, and what this board has in the past put in as their condition of approval, is that when we have the high holy days, that there be a meeting with the township, police, fire, and other officials to discuss the event. And based on the anticipated attendance at that event, the applicant would be required to perhaps provide police. It may not be necessary. In some instances, where houses of worship initially, the township thought there was a need for police. The police were provided. After the event ran for a year or two, it was determined that police were no longer necessary. And the township said, you know, you don't, we don't have to have the police. But every time that the large event takes place on a yearly basis, there is a requirement of a submission of an application to the township for that event. And then it is reviewed by the township staff, and that's what the conditions of approval have been on the previous applications. So on this application, the twice-year event, we would apply, if the condition is imposed, which I assume it would be, we would apply to the township and say, on such and such a day, we have this event. They actually bring the applicant in, they sit down, they talk about the hours, what's going on. And the township will say to them, you need a police officer from this hour to that hour, and we're required to do it. And so that's how this township operates, and it's worked rather successfully.
I think your understanding of what I was getting at, it's a little bit easier to do it that way because we have defined days as opposed to trying to guess a capacity that will be arriving. So I think that's a better approach, and I would, I would recommend that the board impose that as a condition of approval. Thank you, Mr. Lanfric. Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, this is Kunal again. So this capacity that we are planning, because the holy days for the possible temple on the right and the left side of Middle, South Middle Bush are the same. So if you're looking at a capacity, and I'm just making, you know, using the number eighty-three here, expect another eighty-three or whatever the capacity on the other side is. Also, people coming to worship on the same day, virtually during the same time, because the auspicious times set are looked from the same book or the same formula. So that also will have to be taken into consideration that you might have to, you know, jointly call them because if they are both having, both homes of worship have the functions on the same day, then the traffic patterns might be a little different.
Again, I don't want to talk to the other application at this time because it is not before you. But again, we understand that. And also, it may be a little bit different because I think if you recall the testimony of Mr. Patel, even if the religious holy day is on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, they indicated that they would only be celebrating it on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. They are not going to be having services on those other days. The other house of worship may be having services on that Tuesday. And again, they, the event may coincide, but they still may be on different days. But I agree with you that with respect to each of these houses of worship, if there if there is an anticipated larger gathering than the routine service, there would have to be a coordination with the township, with the police, and with both houses of worship.
Thank you, Mr. Lanford. I just want to clarify one thing. Yes, while they may have the the religious or, or the the temple decided activities on a Saturday, but I, as a devotee, would come on that particular Tuesday or Wednesday to the temple to pray. It is irrespective of when the temple itself is having that. And, and the reason why, and while I understand that these two applications are separate, the road is the same, and the days are the same.
Well, that, that, that is not the, the case. Again, our testimony was that we would not be open Monday through Friday, other than the two Fridays a year. Other than that, the facility is not open, even if it's a high holy day, we are not going to be open.
Thanks.
Thanks for reminding me that.
Hey, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question, and, and perhaps this is for Mr. Lanford to, to remind us of, of testimony from previous, you know, testimony from the architect. Or perhaps Mr. or Mr. Arndman, the, the parking requirements that are on the site plan are based on one space for three people during the largest gathering. And, and the figure that's provided on the site plan is four hundred and fifty-eight divided by three, which is a hundred and fifty-three parking spaces, so therefore a hundred and fifty-seven are proposed. Can you remind us where that, do you remember where that four fifty-eight number comes from?
I believe, and I don't, I'd have to go back, and I think it was based on the square footage, not because your ordinance says that there is no fixed, your ordinance has two ways to calculate the seating. One is if there's fixed seating, it's so many, each seat is, if it's their pews, I think, I don't remember, it's thirty-nine inches or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Per seat. If there is no fixed seating, and in this case, there is no fixed seating, your ordinance, I believe, says one space, one person for every fifteen square feet.
That's, Pete, that's correct. It's sixty-eight, sixty-four square feet divided by fifteen is four hundred and fifty-eight. It was the building area that got us to the four hundred and fifty-eight spaces.
So it, it was the area, and that doesn't count, obviously, the altar or the stage or the bathrooms. It's the common area within that building.
All right, so, and again, this question, this was discussed many, many months ago. So it's probably unfair to all of us to try to remember what that fact is right now. What I would suggest, because this, this hearing's not going to conclude tonight, you've basically made the point that you're not going to have any occupancy above two hundred and fifty people on the site. What I would suggest is look at that number, and perhaps the amount of parking that's actually provided on the site is, is, is based on that, which, as Mr. Perkanic said, it's two hundred and fifty divided by eighty-three. That might be something, that might be a, a better parking number for the board to consider. Reduce overall site disturbance, reduce the tree removal, et cetera. Or another possibility would be to perhaps have a little bit more in case there's some, some practical need for a little bit more than, than eighty-three, and maybe the, the balance is made up in the form of land bank spaces. But based on the number of two hundred and fifty people, I don't think you need a hundred and fifty-seven. So I'll just throw that out there for you to consider for a future meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Again, in trying to design the plan, your ordinance required that number of spaces, and that's why they were provided. But I can discuss with my client, perhaps land banking some of those spaces or eliminating them.
And, and in fairness to you and to your client, that is true, the ordinance says one thing, but in the course of the testimony in this hearing, we've been provided testimony about the actual occupancy. You've agreed to limits. So you might want to consider having the parking correlate to those figures.
I, I will have that discussion with both Ms. Dolan and also with my client to see what is practicable and reasonable, and also keeping in mind some of the comments that were made by some of the board members this evening, that the last thing we wanted to do was put ourselves in a situation, if there is a glitch of some kind where people are parking on the access road, or because there's no other place to park. So we do have to have some fluff in there just to make sure that there are no problems, but we can look at all of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, if not.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm just curious, while we're talking about the parking spots, are any of these suitable for EVs? Like, do you have EV charging stations? Just curiosity.
When the, the project was designed, they were not set up that way. And it was our feeling that most of the time, based on the way the facility operated, people were not going to be there for extended periods of time where a charging station would be necessary, as opposed to a, a, a place of employment in office building or warehouse where a car could be there all day and therefore could get charged. Based on the testimony of Mr. Patel at the last hearing, people are there most of the time for an hour, an hour and a half. And so we didn't look into that, or we didn't propose that. It can be accomplished if the board felt it was necessary, but we didn't feel.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I guess it would be time to open to the public. So anybody in the listening audience?
Question to Dan, should we have the opposing attorneys give them the opportunity?
I would give the opposing attorneys first.
All right, so why, why don't I suggest we go in alphabetical order and ask Ms. Bailey if she has any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Actually, Jen and I sort of kibbited among ourselves before, and, and she was going to take the lead here, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Healy. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Jennifer Kanak from Price New Sherman in D.R. Mino. On behalf of the adjoining neighbor, John and Mary Ellen Warwick. How are you, Ms. Dolan, this evening?
Good, thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you as well. Just a few questions. In your report, you noted that the, that South Middle Bush Road is an urban minor arterial road. During peak traffic for South Middle Bush, considering that it is a minor arterial road, would you consider, would you characterize the flow of traffic during peak to be heavy, light, medium generally?
I, I would say heavy during historical peak activity. I used to commute that corridor, and it certainly was busy pre-COVID. I think we're getting back to those numbers as the months progress.
Thank you. The, you meant, you, you referenced your, the other application of which you were the traffic engineer of record and prepared a report with regard to, is it site data? Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Site data, that's correct, yeah.
When you prepared this report, was that taken into account with that, that development?
The county had actually asked us to look at the coincident activity of the two. They, they, the, the two applications are not generally coincident with peak activity, but we did provide a letter to the county dated July seven, twenty twenty, to address those comments. But basically indicated that they were non-coincident peaking uses.
If I may just ask the board, I guess it would be to, to Mr. Healy, is that letter uploaded on the website? Any chance we can review it?
I can tell you that I'm looking at my copy of the letter. I didn't copy the municipality. I copied Mr. Lanford and our team, and then the site data team, so I don't know that the town does have that.
Oh, okay. Is that something that the applicant would be amenable to admit, to supplying with the board and uploading, Mr. Lanford?
I, I don't have the letter in front of me. I'd need to review it, so I'm not going to commit. But after I review it, if it makes sense, that it sheds light on both of these projects, I would be happy to provide it.
Great, thank you very much. Are you familiar with the, the store, the distance between the proposed driveway for the site data and this proposed driveway?
I actually don't have that dimension. No, that might be something for Mr. for the, for the engineer, but I don't, I don't have that with me right now, no.
Are there any additional provisions being made to ensure the safety of turns in and out of sight? Say, for instance, aside from, from having an off-duty cop on the rather large gatherings, was there any consideration given other than having an off-duty cop in terms of the safety pulling in and out?
Well, we certainly have to provide the appropriate site distance for the county, an appropriately designed driveway. In terms of the routine operation, we've shown there's appropriate capacity. So other than meeting the county criteria and site distance criteria, we've offered to provide an off-duty police officer for peak activity. That's, that's what's been designed and offered at this point.
Thank you very much. Did you happen to review any or look into whether there was any accident or incident reports in the area?
I have not reviewed that, no.
Is that something that you would normally consider from a traffic standpoint?
Typically, well, in Franklin, usually we do get a, a review from the police department, and I'll have to defer to Mr. Lanford if I, I don't recall, and I don't have anything in front of me right now. But we have not done an accident investigation. We don't typically do that in Franklin, because we do typically get a review from the police department. So our, our office has not done any accident study.
Understood. Mr. Lanford, can you speak to that? Do you know if you received a report from the police?
Yes, we did. On May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, we received a report from Officer Haime, I think is how he pronounces his name, and he said, "I review the above cap, captioned subject plans and have no comments at this time."
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Lanford. Just a few more questions, Ms. Dolan. Did you consider, or was there any possibility of conducting traffic counts at a similar institution to get real-time comparison traffic counts?
We did not do that. We relied on the information from the applicant that was testified to at the last hearing, and that was presented to us at the onset of the project to develop the estimates. And as I had testified, the activity is gradual or floating, as the applicant had indicated, as opposed to start and end times of a typical service. So our analysis assumed that everybody would come at once, even though that's not what the applicant is proposing.
Okay, just one final follow-up question. Is, just because I, I don't have an IT in front of me, is there an IT standard for this type of use?
There is. I don't have that data in front of me right now. As I had indicated earlier in my testimony for, for parking, we typically look at seating. Same thing for houses of worship. In, in this particular case, it's not exactly that way. So we did not go to IT. There is IT data, but I don't have it with me tonight.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Dolan.
Welcome.
Who's next?
Good evening, Ms. Ms. Dolan, if I may. Martina Bailey, on behalf of Ray and John Snyder, who own the farm next to the, the site. One of my questions was going to be what the standard is for IT, because it's struck me, you mentioned that IT is based on seating, whereas your analysis is based on the applicant's projected attendance. Now, if we knew what the standard was for IT, you can imagine that those calculations would, would result in very different numbers. And it's hard to say without knowing what the IT standard is, but if it was, just for example, similar to the, the ordinance standard for parking, which is fifteen square feet for the, the house of worship, square footage of six thousand and, and change, which results in the four hundred and fifty-eight seats. One of the, one of the variances that being requested is from that parking requirement. Could you explain to us why you wouldn't use the IT standard and, as opposed to the projected attendance in your, your analysis of traffic?
Well, the IT provides these guidelines, and they tell you to apply engineering judgment. And so my job is to understand the application, understand the operation, and look at what is actually proposed. The IT provides guidelines for generic churches, synagogues, mosques. That doesn't exactly fit the application that we're addressing this evening. The typical IT data is based on sites where people arrive for the beginning of a service and depart at the end of a service. What is proposed here is a gradual flow of people coming and going. They spend the time they want to fulfill their, their need, and then they leave. So there's no structured service, and that's why I didn't apply the IT. And as I also said earlier, the IT does caution against the use of the building area for a church or house of worship, because there are different amenities at these churches. Some places provide more fellowship area. I know, you know, my church provides a basement area that can be used for an overflow service. So the, the usual use of IT is based on seating capacity. But for this particular use, IT was not necessarily applicable, because people are arriving and departing gradually, as opposed to coming for a specific service time.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. Now, in, in, in your analysis, you've done a traffic report. Does your advice and analysis of this project extend to, to parking and the parking requirements?
Only on a limited basis. I had reviewed the parking based on one space per three attendees, which is eighty-five spaces, one space per fifteen square feet of worship area, which I just mentioned, you know, maybe twenty minutes ago, would indicate the need for four, four hundred and fifty-eight spaces. So the, the parking supply that's been provided is in between those two. But that's the extent of my, my testimony on the parking.
I'm, I'm going to go back to a, a line of questioning that was, like, Gana asked you about, and, and just push you a little bit on what, what number of cars flowing in and out of this site for a given event would, within, let's say, an hour, a space of an hour, would, would cause you concern from a traffic perspective? You said you, you think it could be up as many as sixty or seventy, I think you said. But, but if I said a hundred, would your response change?
I, I, I think at a hundred cars trying to come out in an hour, if we looked at that absolute highest peak hour traffic flow on South Middle Bush, we'd probably end up at a level of service F. As Mr. Lanford and I had indicated, for any peak attendance, we would be looking at an off-duty police officer to facilitate movements out of the site. We analyzed fifty cars coming out in an hour. As I said earlier in my testimony, sixty, seventy cars in an hour. I haven't analyzed it, but I would think we'd still be in the E range if we got up to a hundred. That would probably get us into the F range. And so what that would mean is that there would be more queuing on site, more vehicles waiting for those opportunities to exit onto South Middle Bush Road. But again, my analysis is based on the highest one hour of traffic on South Middle Bush Road, where the, the traffic, when you look at the hour-by-hour data that was appended to our report, shows that the volumes average from five hundred, or they range from, I'm sorry, five hundred and seven up to that thirteen seventy-eight and back down to. shows that the volumes average from five hundred and they range from, I'm sorry, five hundred seven up to that thirteen seventy eight and back down to twelve forty three. So there there's a huge range in activity. I think that we're we're definitely looking at at this peak attendance, you know, twice a year with the two hundred and fifty vehicles. Sure, we're going to have some peering on site, and that's why the applicant has said, let's get an off duty police officer to help get those vehicles off the property and into the the traffic flow.
You you mentioned you talked about the load on South Middle Bush Road. How how is load determined?
I'm sorry, the the load was I talking about?
The traffic load. I believe you were you talking about the load on on South Traffic on South Middle Bush.
I I'm I'm not sure. I was talking about specifically on on Saturdays, we had tra- talked about the the two way traffic volume ranging from, you know, the seven o'clock in the morning, five hundred and seven is the two way flow. Six o'clock to seven o'clock, one thousand forty three, and the peak hour traffic load volume, this is a two way traffic flow. The absolute highest hour volume was from twelve to one P M, and that was thirteen seventy eight. So it's it's, you know, it's it's fluctuating throughout the course of the Saturday. And of course, for this application, we're looking at peak activity on Saturday. That's why we looked at the hour by hour activity on Saturday on South Middle Bush.
Right, and you you would, I think, in your report concluded that the service level E was for for the egress. And I'm assuming that would be at the peak hour.
That's right. We assumed that fifty vehicles would exit in that highest hour when we recorded thirteen seventy eight vehicles as a two way volume on South Middle Bush. Correct.
And what's the um, for for my edification and maybe some others, what what is service level E? What does that mean?
Well, level of service E in this particular case is indicating that on average, a a person who's leaving the site would be waiting somewhere between thirty five and fifty seconds to to exit the site. So it's an onsite delay based on an average expected timeframe for a vehicle to wait before they exit the site. So it's at the bottom of our level of service scale, levels of service describe how an intersection operates, and it's not uncommon for a driveway or side street to operate at C, D, or E during peak conditions. And we did calculate E, again, assuming that all fifty vehicles were exiting during one hour.
Okay. And if if all those vehicles were exiting within an hour, what about the queue of those vehicles extending into the site? What happens if they all started to to try and exit and they sort of queue up along the driveway? Did did you look at that and whether the site could handle a queue of of fifty cars trying to exit at roughly the same time?
Well, it doesn't really matter from a traffic impact perspective because they're on site. So there's no impact to the through moving vehicles on South Middle Bush Road. And that's typically what does happen at a church or a house of worship, a temple. And that's why we had indicated that if there were peak events, we would have the off duty police officer to help bring them off the site. But it's it's a self imposed condition. So they're they're onsite, they're waiting to leave, and they wait.
Understood. I I guess from, you know, from a neighbor's perspective, it matters because it means you have fifty cars, you know, potentially idling on the site, all of it with their headlights on and with the gas running. And so I think from 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 for other reasons, that could be a concern, given that the level of service exiting could could be could be E, which is the second to lowest.
Was that a question?
Um, I guess it wasn't a question, but I but I I wanted to give you some reason for why I'm asking that. I I recognize that it may not be relevant for the traffic on South Middle Bush, but it certainly is relevant for the neighbors. I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Any other people out there wish to ask questions? And this is again the time that we're limited to questions concerning the testimony about the traffic.
Kim, Chairman, do a few people. I'll I'm going to unmute Michael Bell first. Go ahead, Mr. Bell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. I have a question for Ms. Dolan with respect.
Can we get an address from Mr. Bell, please?
Michael Bell, Seventy Copper Mine Road, Princeton in Franklin Township. All right. My question is for Ms. Dolan. Um, with respect to the measurement of the peak traffic volume on South Middle Bush Road on Saturdays, at what time of the year was that taken? Did it coincide with the period when the Snyder Farm is operating on the next driveway down with their various activities throughout the summer and the fall?
Uh, the count, the specific Saturday count was April sixth, two thousand nineteen.
That would not coincide with the peak usage of Middle Bush Road for people visiting the Snyder Farm. And I think those numbers that you have there of the thirteen eighty five, I think, was the peak round about midday, are likely to be a considerable undercount for when people are visiting that farm and also during the summer when they're using the recreational facilities in that area. That's my comment.
Okay, any other questions?
Not for me at this stage.
Okay, all right, thank you. If you could put your hand down, I would appreciate that. Thank you. We have Leah Convery. Go ahead. If you could state your your address for the record.
Leah Convery, forty three Townsend Court, Franklin Park. And my questions are, I've I've heard everybody talk about going in and out of this facility. Has it, where are these these attendees coming from? So have have you done a traffic study for the traffic that's going to be on every road from Skillman, Claremont, Cordelou, Jacques Lane, access to Blackwells Mills Road as well? Has has that been done?
No.
Okay, because I live in Franklin Park, and this is the main artery. And Ms. Dolan, you you did mention that you did commute on this road. I drive this road every single day. I I grew up here. I grew up in Grigstown. My grandparents lived in off New Brunswick Road. So this is the main artery. This past couple weeks, they repaved part of Blackwells Mills, or I'm sorry.
Okay, is there a question coming?
Yes. What am I supposed to do? Because I had to go down South Middle Bush while they were repainting. And I had to go to Warren from Franklin Park, and I had to go down to the canal and all through back roads to avoid the absolute mess that South Middle Bush Road was. So what what is going to to have you done a traffic study on these other roads for where these people are coming from? Specifically, Cordelou, that has a single lane bridge in the middle of it. And if people are coming from, let's say, Edison, how are they going to get to this facility? Because these are not necessarily going to be everybody from this town.
Ms. Dolan, I I think perhaps I I know that for certain projects of certain scales, there are larger scale traffic analyses that are done for surrounding roadways and the big, basically, the bigger the project, the more the traffic, the broader the scale of the traffic study and the more intersections that are analyzed, et cetera. So can you explain a little bit why that type of traffic study wasn't done for this application?
Sure. Um, the the focus of our traffic study for both of the municipal application that we're hearing tonight and 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 also the county, because county has jurisdiction on South Middle Bush Road, was to assess the driveway intersection on South Middle Bush Road and to ensure that there's appropriate capacity to accommodate movements into and out of the the driveway for the routine operation of this house of worship. What I think this particular resident is questioning is a more broad scale type of overall traffic analysis of activity on the roadway corridor. We are not looking at that in terms of a site plan application. That would be more of a traffic planning study that might be undertaken by the town to look at the overall development impacts of regional development and looking at possible improvements to the overall roadway system. So it it gets a little bit beyond what we're looking at for the purposes of tonight's site plan application.
And I I respectfully disagree because you have to take into consideration where where the the devotees are coming from and going and and not just where they're going to. This is not a driveway issue. This is the entire area surrounding an artery in this town.
And again, I I would say that as the as was presented at the April fifteenth hearing, this is going to be gradual arrival and departure of devotees to this facility. The guidance for traffic studies is one hundred trips at an intersection in one hour is worthy of analysis. And this application is not going to create that level of activity that will warrant that level of analysis.
I again respectfully disagree that this is this doesn't warrant this because if you go the, what, five hundred yards down the road, the intersections of Jacques Lane and Cordelou Lane at South Middle Bush on regular traffic days is absolutely atrocious. And I again, the the police officers didn't comment on traffic accidents. When there's a traffic accident at at this particular, I'm talking about, this traffic backs up past Hilltop Lane, way past there, and and there is no way to get around it. So that that's my comment for that. Um, I also would like to know what the impact on traffic is going to be during construction time, because you're talking about devotees of three days a week or whatever, but construction is going to be going on continuously for how long? And you're talking about big trucks going in and out. And and has that been addressed at all? And this not, Ms. Dolan, is not necessarily for you. Anybody?
Well, the the answer is to the to the extent that obviously the the house of worship needs to be constructed, construction vehicles will will be accessing the site. One of the things that we had agreed to was to build immediately the new driveway at its new location so that all construction vehicles will be able to safely enter and leave the site on the new driveway and not use the existing driveway on the property. So that.
What it, what is the construction schedule for for that driveway?
I I wouldn't have, yes.
It's not going to be a day because there's all that ground clearing that's got to go on. So we're we're talking about days, weeks. I I need to know how long I'm going to be inconvenienced for, not.
We haven't gotten into the construction. I mean, we're we're right now supposed to be questioning the traffic engineer.
I'm asking. Okay.
If you have a question concerning her testimony, we would all like to hear it.
My my questions were about the traffic patterns for the very dangerous intersection five hundred yards away from this this driveway. And and you've answered that, that you haven't taken that into consideration. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see. We have Carol Crawl. Go ahead, if you could.
Hi, good evening.
Provide us your your address for the record.
Thirteen Marco Polo Court, Franklin Park. Good evening, Ms. Dolan. This question is directly for you. You keep talking about the outgoing traffic when you have thirty vehicles leaving at a high peak hour, perhaps. Well, if those fifty vehicles are leaving at the same time, then it's safe in my mind to assume that they probably came at the same time, perhaps for a special occasion, a dance show that Mr. Bertella talked about in April or other things. Have you taken into account in your study what perhaps twenty vehicles on South Middle Bush Road heading south, having to make a left turn into the facility would do to track on South Middle Bush Road during even a non-peak time, but let's look at a peak time.
Yes, I did analyze that. That was part of the study that we submitted dated November twenty one, two thousand nineteen. And we found that there is acceptable levels of service and gaps available to accommodate that without impeding southbound traffic. And again, that was based on the highest traffic volume recorded in one hour midday Saturday.
And what number of cars did you use in that study for entering, making a left hand turn within the same short?
Twenty five.
Twenty five. And how long did it take in your study for those twenty five to be able to make a left turn into the facility?
Well, over the course of an hour, they were able to make that. They were opposed by six hundred and eighty six vehicles. So there were enough opportunities over the course of an hour to process those at an acceptable operational level.
What would be considered an acceptable operational level?
Level of service A. It's the top of the top of the level of service scale.
Can you give me an idea of a time that would be attached to that? If I'm sitting behind seven of those cars or eight of those cars during that peak period, could you give me an idea of the time it would take for perhaps ten cars to be able to make it through?
There there's virtually no delay because over the course of an hour, twenty five vehicles
For now.
can turn into the site. There's no projected queue. There's no projected impact to the through moving southbound activity on South Middle Bush Road. So there's there's a delay, an average delay of of only nine seconds for a left turn movement into the site.
Because you're averaging over the room time.
During peak time for someone who's ridden that road, as you've said you have, and I have every single day for almost thirty years, I find that, not that I'm taking your credentials into account, but I think there's something wrong with that figure because we've sat on.
Remember, let's remember that the traffic volumes on a midday Saturday during that busiest peak hour are well below what we experience on the typical morning and evening commuter routes. We're talking about thirteen seventy eight versus almost nineteen hundred vehicles. So there's a a little bit of a difference. And again, we're assuming that it's one hour during this busiest hour on a Saturday.
Way too.
Okay, let's move on. I have another question. Did you take into account at any point in time the bicycle traffic on that road, especially from about May or June through the fall? Franklin has quite a number of bicycle groups that use South Middle Bush Road on Saturdays on a regular basis.
There was no specific attention to bicycle traffic, no.
Okay, because this will be presenting an additional danger to them as well. Did you take into account that that is one of the narrowest sections of South Middle Bush Road? It cannot even have the white lane barriers from basically from the Warwick's House all the way to Courteille You. It is the only section of South Middle Bush Road with that kind of length that has no white lane marking at all because it's too narrow. Was that taken into account at all?
The lane configuration was taken into account.
Because there is no, not even inches of shoulder in that section of the roadway that this property is going to be on. Is that correct?
Um, and again, we had looked at left turn lane warrants, lane configuration, particularly in consideration of the application to the county planning board.
Okay, did you take into account based on what we've seen happening to other temples, which, by the way, Mr. Lanford, I know you've been involved, but there is no other temple in this township that is on such a narrow road and let alone be such a large facility. Did you take into account?
Are you sure about that?
I'm ninety percent sure about that. I am 90% Okay, that would be the exception. You got me there. And Coeur d'Alene is a road I avoid because it's so I didn't get to the question because Mr. Lanford talked to me about the temple, but that's okay. Now I lost my track on the question. All right, you answered my left turn. So I think I will stop at this point and let somebody else have it.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Mr. Schmidt has his hand still up, so I'm going to call on him. Arnold Schmidt, do you have a question for Ms. Dolan?
I have several questions, a few questions for the board and the applicant. First, how does the clear cutting this mature dense tree stand benefit the people of Franklin by the applicant paying into the tree fund and/or planting a few trees to satisfy ordinance when?
I'm going to object to the question because it has nothing to do with traffic and also it was discussed at previous hearings. I'm going to object to it.
I'm going to advise that that be sustained. Mr. Schmidt, you're not really questioning at this time the board members. You're questioning the traffic expert on her traffic testimony.
When do I get to ask questions about some tree issues, some environmental issues?
That's usually engineering, or you can make comments at the end.
At the end of what, tonight?
No, at the end of all the presentation of witnesses.
So I have like two and a half minutes of questions and you're not going to let me do that right now?
If they're if they're related to traffic and the traffic engineer's testimony, you can ask away.
They are not related to traffic.
Okay, then this is not the witness that you would direct those questions to, sir.
And when is this going to be that I would be able to direct these questions?
We don't.
Well, we've had engineering testimony. We've had architectural testimony tonight, you know, in the past. Tonight is traffic engineering testimony. I don't know if you were around for those prior meetings, but you will be able to ask those questions if other witnesses are presented by Mr. Lanfrid or if witnesses are presented by the objective councils at a later time. Tonight, again, has been focused on traffic.
Well, I would rather just ask them in the local newspapers and then I will ask them if I have the time, if I have the opportunity, I will present them, you know, whenever the traffic issues come up, I guess, because to give me two and a half minutes now for you all to hear it. I understand the young process. But if you can't give me two and a half minutes.
In fairness, everybody's following the same rules here.
I understand.
The applicant is following the rules. The board is following the rules. The opposing attorneys are following the rules. They're asking for special accommodations.
No, I'm not asking for
And the board is, we have traffic testimony tonight and we're asking for questions that can help the board analyze the traffic information, the testimony that's been provided tonight. Everybody's following the same rules.
I understand that. Was that made clear on the stuff? Maybe I missed it. Was that made clear?
We make it clear. We've been doing this for a year now. This is probably the fifth or sixth hearing. We make it clear at every single reading that this is the procedure.
With every witness, we make it clear.
Okay.
And the point of it, Mr. Schmidt, not to belabor the point, is so that the record is clean and clear. Okay, we're trying to build a record here as the applicant and the objective councils are. The board is trying to synthesize and analyze evidence in a very organized manner. And that is what I recommend as council to the board, how they proceed in all of these meetings, not just data bag one application, but all applications.
I can appreciate that. So I will present my questions in a different fashion, I guess, since I may not be able to be there when when you all have your have when the proper time for me to do it is there is I might not be available. So I can appreciate and I respect your process. So I will not ask them now.
Okay, thank you. Again, if I could ask those who have already asked questions to put their hands to do their, put their hand down in WebEx. So for example, I think Ms. Croll, you've already asked your questions. You could put your hand down. Mr. Bell, I believe, put his hand back up. So I'm going to unmute him. Mr. Bell, do you have an additional question? Mr. Bell? Sorry, Mr. Bell, do you have an additional question?
Yes, I do have two comments with respect to earlier points which are made here.
Are they questions?
Yeah. Well, with respect to the accident reports from South Middle Bush Road, I would point out that as recently as April the 22, South Middle Bush Road was closed for an accident. And that was sent around by the Franklin Township Police on Nixal. So with respect to their comments, that there was no, that they had no comment on accidents on the road. Secondly, I want to point out that with respect to the left-hand turn for people traveling south on South Middle Bush Road, it is completely unrealistic to average the traffic over one hour and say that maybe 50 cars in an hour.
Sir, I'm going to stop you. That is your opinion. That is not a question. The expert has provided you with her opinion. You can ask questions regarding her testimony. You are now providing comment. I'm sorry?
I would ask her then, I'll put it in the form of a question.
Go ahead.
Has she done any statistical analysis of the averaging period over which the traffic is counted in order to calculate the wait time for a left turn?
I assume that traffic would arrive in one hour. All of the attendees would arrive in one hour. As the applicant had testified at the April 15 hearing, the people will be arriving and departing gradually over several hours. I assume that the people would be arriving over one hour.
I will make no comment on that, but I will refer to the board to consider the validity of that argument. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we do have another person with their hand up. Let me just mute Mr. Bell real quick there. Okay, Selva Ramasamy. You're unmuted. Go ahead.
Yeah, hey, this is Selvage Ramasamy. I'm in Ten Tora Drive, Somerset, New Jersey. I heard about like I'm picking bagging on a question that was asked earlier about people going get trying to get out and trying to get in at the same time. So there was a question asked about like, what if there are seven cars waiting and trying to make a left turn? How much time it would take? You said it about nine seconds, but that just seems to be cross-leandre estimated because on the same road on the peak hours when the Snyder Farm is hosting some functions and some festivals, even with the car presence there, it takes about like, you know, if I'm trying to get in from the Clermont into the Middle Bush, it takes quite a bit of time because, you know, the cars have to wait, they have to make a turn and go. With the police presence, it takes about for me to cross that to get to that Snyder Farm from the Clermont Road, takes about four to five minutes. So that's the delay I get with the police presence and the same number of cars you are talking about. So have you considered such a practical scenario on such a narrow road rather I because, you know, your nine seconds doesn't seem to align with the peak hour we are seeing on the road even during the pandemic last year?
The nine seconds was related to the left turn into the site. The calculated delay for exiting is 36 to 48 seconds. So that makes sense in terms of some of your commentary.
So that's the question. I mean, adding on to that question. So, you know, we have a practical example sitting out there with the Snyder Farm where, you know, it takes a quite a bit of time for cars like, you know, when like 10, like usually I don't see like 100 cars waiting. It's usually five or six cars trying to get in and one or two cars trying to get out. It takes about five minutes to cross that intersection for people. So with this kind of facility, and I am being from the same faith, all these numbers seem to be under grossly underestimated because, you know, people, you know, there's more traffics tend to come because, you know, so can you do a study like, you know, considering that Snyder Farm scenario and see how much time it would truly take? And I also have another question. We are talking about we make people coming out and trying to make one turn, but there will be people from both sides, right? So people they'll be trying to make a right turn as well as a left turn. So isn't it a cause for concern, you know, without a police presence there?
Again, as I have testified, the delay is on site. So it's not an impact to the through moving traffic. It's a detriment, if you want to use that word, or an inconvenience for any of the people who are going to this house of worship, waiting to leave the site. And yes, we did model left turns and right turns into and out of the site, but the delay is on site. So it's an onsite delay. It's not a negative impact to South Middle Bush Road. It's the same as any other driveway or intersection on South Middle Bush Road. Yes, you have to wait. And as someone had asked earlier, would we warrant signalization? No. This is how traffic operates. And that's why the applicant has offered during peak activity to provide an off-duty police officer to help move people off the site. It's again, it's not an impact to South Middle Bush Road. It's an inconvenience to the people who are actually wanting to go to this particular house of worship.
No, I mean, I think the focus has been always on people getting out because that's that supports the applicant's case. But I'm talking about people trying to get in and waiting from both sides, right? Because, you know, people are trying to make a right turn to get in, like a left turn to get in. So that just, you know, from practical purposes, you know, what kind of impact it's going to have.
Well, and again, I had testified that the left turn in is an average of about nine seconds of delay. And the right turn in is virtually unimpeded. So those movements can be made. As the applicant had testified, there's a gradual arrival and departure of people. So there's not a big on flux of activity at the beginning of what would be a typical church service or the outlet of a church service. Instead, people are coming and going. I think the word was floating activity. So I don't see this as being a traffic problem for the driveway operation.
I would make a request to the board to note this down, right? Because then everybody knows what happens on the Snyder Farm. So this nine seconds, you know, I mean, I can really ask
Sarah, I'm going to cut you off. You're making conclusory statements. Now is not the time to make conclusory statements or give opinions. So you did a good job asking some good questions, but now you're kind of venturing off into giving your opinion and now is not the time for that.
Okay, so will I ever get a chance to go? So should I write this study or like, you know?
Every member of the public will be given the opportunity to voice their opinion at the close of all witnesses.
Okay, so I have one more question. So there are like a nearby similar faith temples, right, which even I go to. So has the traffic study considered similar faith worship places rather than taking a different type of worship places to compare? Because the one on the 20 Route 27, the Turcan Temple, I think somebody, some board member also mentioned about it. You know, that traffic is always, you know, horrible because of the number of people that project it doesn't always sit. So what happens if since there is a 150 parking spots available, what if the cars for 150 comes in? What's going, what's going to end up happening? Because we are always talking about 83. I don't know how that 83 number was just based on applicants or request. I mean, it was like whatever they said, it has been said. But what if the entire parking lot was occupied? So what would be the traffic impact if that were to happen?
We analyzed the traffic impact as is projected based on the proposal that's before the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, there's Danielle. I'll just, I'll bring up Danielle Hanley in a second, but if I could ask Mr. Schmidt and Carol Croll, if you could, if you don't have additional questions, please lower your hand in WebEx just so we can get to the people who have questions. Danielle Hanley, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Good evening, Danielle Hanley, 115 Almond Drive. This is a question for, I would think, council. At what point does this traffic report from 2019 become or become considered outdated?
That's not for me to answer. I think it's for Ms. Dolan as to whether she feels that in her opinion, an updated traffic report is appropriate or necessary. And Ms. Dolan, I think, can answer that question.
And I can. We have been counting traffic for years and 2019 was certainly representative of what I would consider normal or typical conditions. We've had a huge impact on traffic volumes based on the COVID work from home, school from home. And we certainly have not seen the growth in traffic that NJDOT had historically indicated. So I would consider these traffic counts from April 2019 to be appropriate. Any counts that we are doing now, we are adjusting to pre-COVID conditions using counts like this. So in my opinion, this is completely representative of appropriate traffic conditions, average conditions for South Middle Bush Road.
Okay, thank you. Going back to the accident reports, is it normal for you not to take into consideration the number and severity of accidents that report on any given road that you were asked to study?
We typically don't do accident history studies through the normal course of a traffic impact study, usually through the review process, either through the engineering review, if there's a traffic engineering review, in this case, a police department review that that accidents are known to be an issue, then we will pursue that and evaluate that. But in this case, we did not study accidents. That's not our normal course of operation unless we're directed typically to do that.
Do you know if there's a, it's an X number of accidents and then you would consider it, or it's just whatever the township agrees or disagrees via that letter that you received from the police?
Usually it's in sort of a pre-application type of setting that we would be directed to accident history concerns. And again, you know, in this case, we didn't actively pursue accident history activity. And that's really because we do a lot of work in the town and the police department typically guides us with their review comments.
Okay. And it just, I don't need an answer to this, but I could probably say that there is not one member of the council on the call who has not sat in traffic on South Middle Bush Road. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask Ms. Dolan one question. Ms. Dolan, as part of the county's review, did they bring up traffic accidents and ask you to look at that?
No, they did not.
Okay. So we have Jeff Green.
Yes, hi. Jeff Green, 1 Letapie Drive, Somerset. I just wanted to ask if there is any, just for Ms. Dolan and for the board, is there a proportionate or maybe, maybe it's better to say disproportionate consideration given in these testimonies, in this testimony specifically and to this topic, to the surrounding residents, the immediate residents? Because everything seems to be in Ms. Dolan's study, seems to be catered to sort of a transient, what's the traffic? You know, I'm coming, I'm passing You know, I'm coming, I'm passing through here and this is the artery. Any part of the study deal with the, you know, people coming out of the development on Letapie Drive? Coming out of the development on Claremont, Sudam, um, obviously gets a little more densely populated as you get over to that side. There's a quality of life issue that we're dealing with here for people who are residents who came there many years ago and people continue to come here. So, so that, that's my question. The other comment I would make too is just the COVID thing keeps coming up. I would almost even argue that COVID could be the opposite effect after COVID. Because people who commuted at one point and left for long stretches of the day might actually now be at home. And may commute for more locally than they would be out of town. That's it.
So Ms. Dolan, he did have a question initially.
I think the question is, uh, the impacts to other, um, street intersections serving residential developments. Um, and again, that sort of goes to a, a more planning, a traffic planning type of analysis. The focus of our analysis was to ensure that there's, um, sufficient, um. Opportunity to accommodate movements into and out of the site driveway, and that is also the county's requirement. We counted obviously all the traffic that's coming into and out of the different residential streets and, uh, all the activity that's on the road. Um, and as to the COVID impacts, again, you know, we're counting traffic all over the place, um, a few months ago. I would say the morning activity was much lower, the afternoon evening activity was creeping up. Um, but I would, I would stand by our numbers from 2019 as being representative of the historic activity on South Middle Bush Road. And having commuted that road, uh, I certainly understand the, the activity. And, uh, maybe some of the frustration getting into and out of the, the local streets and driveways there. But the, the study that we've done was really focusing on the ability to provide safe and efficient access for Data Bag One.
And, and, and to the, and thank you. Um, and, and the, the, the other part of that question was to the board and I don't know if that's appropriate or not. Please, if I, if it's not, I understand, but, um, is the, is there proportionate or disproportionate consideration given? In, in such a matter to, to the immediate residents of, of the area?
I'm not sure if I understand the question, sir. Can you, can you elaborate?
Well, I mean, there's, there's obviously a, a, an issue, you know, I'm not, I'm not really concerned about a, as a resident of Franklin Township who's paid taxes here for 20 years. I'm really not all that concerned about somebody who passes through here on their daily commute, because I live here. I am vested interest. Um, you know, my family is here, my friends are here, um, our children are here.
I'll just make one comment that I think that, um, is, is relevant here. Effectively, the board's jurisdiction is limited in this aspect. They, the board is not to consider traffic. That is, say way down on a particular road or off of this main artery. And look at the totality of the traffic for the entire town. That effectively is a governing body's job, say, road widening, correcting, uh, lights, uh, adding stop signs. That kind of stuff is not the function of this board. The function of this board is to evaluate this project. And how it is affecting the intersection on South Middle Bush Road and its immediate vicinity. So there is, there is a, a level of jurisdiction where this board, uh, the, the, this board's jurisdiction does ultimately end. So I just want to clarify that to the public. They're just, the jurisdiction of this board is not for the entire town. That is oftentimes more of a governmental function, um, so just to clarify that.
But are you, I, and I'm sorry, I, I, I think I understand most of what you're saying. But when you say affecting, affecting whom? And as the board, are you not the board that represents the taxpayers of the township?
No, no, we, we are a quasi judicial board, which means that we act like a court. Which means that we have applicants who come and present the case. We listen to the facts and we apply the law to the facts. In fact, there is case law out there, uh, specifically for planning boards and site plans that says, and I'm going to quote this. The Pellet Division held that a planning board was without authority to deny site plan approval because of off-site traffic conditions. Stating that the authority to prohibit or limit uses generating traffic into already congested streets. Or streets with high rate of accidents is an exercise of the zoning power vested in the municipal governing body. Okay, so the representatives, uh, who represent the taxpayers is the mayor and council. This board is a, is a, think about it as a court of law. We hear facts. We apply the legal standards to those facts and we render a conclusion based on, on that. So it's, again, it's a very narrow perspective. We're not a legislative body. We are a judicial body.
Understood. Thank you. Very helpful.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I do not see any other members of the public with their hands raised at this point.
Okay, if there still aren't none, then we'll close to the public. And, uh, did we decide on the next date?
I, I believe speaking to Mr. Healy, the meeting two weeks from today is available.
Am I having an issue? No. Do you not see it?
If I may ask a question, Mr. Lanfrith, how, uh, what witnesses do you project need to come yet?
Uh, I intend to present planning testimony at the next hearing. I don't know whether I will be calling any additional witnesses after that. That may be my last witness. And, and I would assume since we finished asking questions of Ms. Dolan that she need not be back the next hearing, correct?
We've, we're finished. I don't think any of the, uh, board had the opportunity, the public had the opportunity.
Okay.
And of course, after your planner, we'll have to give the objectors attorney. Their opportunity.
Yeah, and, and I.
Just trying to get a view about.
Yeah.
How far down the road we're going to be going yet.
And, and perhaps, Mr. Chairman, it may help all of us if, uh, Ms., if, if both council for the objectors can indicate whether they intend to call witnesses. So that we can sort of, again, plan scheduling and, uh, maybe can advise Mr. Healy in the next few days as to that.
Can you hear me now, Mr. Thomas? Dan, you're saying yes, you can hear me?
I can hear you, yes, Christine.
Okay, for those of you that wish to join in on the next hearing for this matter, uh, that, that bag one, it will be carried to May 20th. You can join by going to the date on May 20th at Thursday at 7:30 PM. And signing on to Franklin Township, uh, dot org and right over on the left-hand side, you can join the meeting that way. That is probably the easiest way. For those of you calling in, you can reach in by 1-408-418-9388. The access code for the May 20th meeting is 1-737502725. Do you want me to read this whole thing, right? The whole big long one?
Okay, then it will be May 15th.
Hold on one minute, Mr. Thomas. Okay, and then the, it's the link to get into that is Franklin, TWP dot. Uh, I'm sorry, TWPNJ.org forward slash home forward slash components. Forward slash calendar, forward slash event, one seven, forward slash 17598, forward slash 2193. That's the link for the Franklin Township that you can get.